Wow. Thank you, folks. I haven't seen this many people here in a long time, ever. But thank you all for being here. And we're going to open the meeting now at 6 o'clock. We're going to start with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance for our Boy Scout here, Evan. And if you want to start with the pledge, you'll please stand. We'll start right off that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a T and justice for all. Texas, honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Dear wise and loving Father, first let me say thank you. On behalf of all who are gathered here today, thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measurement of health we need to fulfill our callings, for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thanks as well for the freedom to embrace you or the freedom to reject you. Thank you for loving us even so from your boundless and gracious nature.
Thank you very much. That was Evan Abel. He's with our Boy Scout troop 118. So thank you very much, and we appreciate it, and see you next month, okay?
Okay.
Say it again. Can you hear it now?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me start all over. That's Evan, Evan Abel. He's with our Boy Scout troop 118. So thank you very much for that. We'll see you again next month, okay? Thank you. At this time, the opportunity for members of the public to suggest the addition of topics for discussion or to address topics of interest with the presentation limited to three minutes, please. Can you all hear me? Good, okay, three minutes. All speakers will conduct themselves in an orderly and lawful manner. All speakers will be recognized prior to speaking and will announce their name and address to be included in a minute. State law prohibits the mayor and members from city council from commenting on any statement or engaging in any dialogue without appropriate agenda item being posted in accordance with the state open meetings law. With that in mind, I'm going to start with Karen Stagner. And the ladies, there you are. Karen, if you'll come up and at the speaker and announce your name.
Karen Stag, president of the Ladies Auxiliary, One Ash Court. I've always said if you're a little nervous standing in front of a podium, it means you care a lot about what you're getting ready to say. Each year, the auxiliary scholarship, cutting in and out. It was originally the Miss Flame program that was $500, and it was a matching program with the foundation. In 2013, the auxiliary voted to increase it to 1,000. Flame would represent the auxiliary at different events. I don't know why this is cutting out. I'm just going to skip it.
No, 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 no. No mic swap, no mic swap.
Anyway, Ms. Flame would represent the auxiliary at different events throughout the year. During 2020, 2021, the auxiliary redesigned our scholarship program, and we renamed it the Flame of Knowledge. So the Ladies Auxiliary will present a $1,000 scholarship check to a graduating senior or GED student who plans to pursue vocational training, associate, or a baccalaureate degree toward a career in public service. There are several requirements and stipulations. This year, we had so many applicants, we decided we were going to award two scholarships Our second place scholarship recipient is not able to be with us tonight, so we will do that at a later meeting. At this point, I would like to introduce you to our guests, Lakin Easton, our scholarship winner. And I'd like to introduce her parents, Monica and Kent. I'd like to thank our scholarship committee. Mary Shockley is the head of the scholarship committee this year. And her committee was Judy Dillon and Rebecca Hutton, who's not able to be with us tonight. So at this point, I'm going to turn the podium, squeaky as it is for me, over to Lakin Easton so she can tell you a little bit about herself and how she qualified for this scholarship.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lakin Easton, and I had the honor of being one of this year's recipients for the Morgan's Point Flame of Knowledge Scholarship. A little bit about my high school career. I was heavily involved in the FFA organization, an agriculture-based leadership program. I participated in leadership development events, career development events, received floral certifications, held officer positions, and showed livestock. I was also a member of the National Honor Society and graduated cum laude in top 7%. But more importantly, through all these different competitions and opportunities, I have learned the importance of a strong leader and the impact it can have on others. I am excited to further my education at Tarleton State University this fall, majoring in agriculture business with a minor in communications. I have always valued the importance of community and public service within my high school career, and I am looking forward to participating in it on a professional level. Although I have worked very hard to get to this point, the work does not stop here. I plan to work harder than ever in this new stage of life. I want to thank each and every one of you for your contribution to my future success. I am truly blessed by my community and extremely grateful. Thank you.
As I know that was well earned, congratulations on that. Next, we will open it up for citizens' comments, and we do have a few tonight. So we're going to start with Lynard Bruce. Is that you? Did you sign up?
Hi, Terry Lindhart, 9 Wyatt Earp, and yes, that's my husband. I'm going, no, all I really can, in the council workshop we had before this, I keep hearing, study, 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 only don't get multiple bids. What business operates that way? There is no business in this world that would take the first bid and run with it. And if we do, I just think it's plain crazy. It's totally not correct business practice, and I just wanted to state that.
Thank you. Thank you, Judy Anderson. Oh, there you are. Can you step up, please?
I don't know how far I need to be up close or long. I don't make too many speeches, but there are some things I'm worried about that may happen, and one is the trail and taking care of it. I've been here 20 years. For the first 10 years, I took care of the trail myself.
Which trail?
The trail. I live in the cul-de-sac of Dean, Judge Roy Bean.
Roy Bean, okay.
City's home, lay him in there. And I'm not living, I'm living alone right now, and my yard is not fenced. And so in the past, I have not had too many people come through my yard, but on occasion, they just walk up from the trail and come through to the trail along the cove.
Is it the one near the Morgan's Point Marina? Is that the trail?
That's where it ends.
Okay.
There's actually.
Okay, okay, okay.
There's actually two trails at one time, a forerunner trail and then just plain trail. But I just want to ask you if there might be some other place to put the games you're supposed to go hang up? What is it?
Golf, disc golf?
Yes. I don't like to think of them coming up that. Could they find another home down by the lake, all of them? Or as I really think about it, there's a better place for that golf anyway?
I cannot respond to that, but thank you for your statement, and thank you for it. And we will address that issue on the next, today during regular session.
Thank you.
Larry?
Dennis, I wasn't going to say anything tonight, but the workshop, I was going to say it then, but we ran out of time, and thank you for bringing that fellow because he had a wealth of knowledge from actually pouring roads. I've lived here 47 years. We have 45 roads. Not all of them have ever been paved since I've lived here. They're not all going to be paved when I die. One mile road is $230,000 if we're lucky, so it's going to be very little. So, you know, just think about that. Now, he left, but I asked him on his way out because for years, we used to heal the roads. I don't know if you're familiar with that. But his statement was, we don't have curbing. Well, healing the road is using the soil and the rocks and the ground to put artificial curbing there. A year later, after the rains, it washes out, you do it again, but it saves the edge of the road for an extended period of time. We're never going to pave all these roads while I'm here unless we get somebody that becomes a trillionaire and donates for the roadwork, which that's highly unlikely. That's the main thing is, you know, think of what you're doing. We have the equipment. We have the maintenance people that are very knowledgeable. They can do a mile a year on healing it. It'll save us a lot of road space, so we save a little bit of money. But thank you for the workshop, but again, like everybody said, there's too many items on the agenda for one hour. You're just not going to cover it.
It won't happen again.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you, Larry. Mr. Ronnie?
I'm Ronnie Snow. I live at the corner of two Frank James, it's the last house before, on the left, not the big house, the one on the left before you go into the marina. I would like to take a minute to ask some questions about the disc golf course. As a marina manager, I want it known that I only learned of this about a week ago. I didn't know there was going to be, that it was going to be right in my backyard till the agenda came out on Thursday. At first, I was going to ask that maybe we make it a half course to keep away from my neighbors' houses and mine. But in the last month or two, it's been a completely different neighborhood. We have homeless people staying in the parking lot and by the bathrooms. And last Thursday, cars are already going under a high water walkway and driving down the bank all the way around where y'all are wanting to clear. Sunday, Sunday at work, the point by the swimming pool was covered with people playing loud music and cussing, cussing every other word. I heard it as well, and the customers at the marina were voicing their opinions on this since they had little kids with them. People in neighborhood are calling about people between 10 and 1 at night spinning out in the parking lot and being loud and having to go down there themselves to get it to stop. For a month, I was getting to work, and the parking lot would be covered in piles of glass. I go sit, I go sit on my days off at 10 at night till I finally catch these people who were shooting these bottles with pellet guns. Last Saturday, my wife and son were barbecuing in the garage, and some guy walked in the garage asking for toilet paper. I was talking on the phone about a month ago, and some guy dressed in all black with a drenched coat and gloves comes running out of the woods right behind my, the middle of our backyard, and this is right where they're playing on playing this golf. Last week, I went to Oakmont. I'm just, when I went to Oakmont last week, I turned in the park, and some guy was peeing right in the open. Yesterday, my wife, son, and I went through there again, and there was a naked young lady changing clothes in the open. We are not in control of these parks. Those are the people we are asking to come to our town. We should be ashamed. And I can guarantee you that most of them are not going to the barbecue places after swimming and spending their money. I have no problem with the golf course, but not right against my yard. The walking trail bothers me. Dogs are going to be barking, kids cussing, no privacy in our own yards. Most of the houses this course goes against are older retired people that spent their life savings for these houses that can be saved quiet, and that is not what they are getting. Once you clean the brush, weeds and chinaberry trees will take over. A good example of this is Oakmont, where the fire department decided to bulldoze after the fire. Look at it now, how many, how many more people is it going to take to add to this to take care of the park after we clear the brush? Who is going to be working, walking and driving in here at night? It may seem like we're griping about those trails. They could be coming behind your house next. And what happens to the, and then another question I wanted to know, and then y'all can't answer this, I know. I was wanting to know what happened to Frisbee Golf Course at Smith Park. It was already started and okayed with the court and also has a view of the lake. I hear people say, put it at Oakmont, but nobody wants this in their own backyard. And we've talked about killing cedar trees with oak, with oak wilt as bad as it is. I wish we could keep some of the trees so at least we have something left after the oak wilt gets everything. I ask that you look at some of these big, how big and old these cedars are before we start cutting. Sunday, I was at my boiling point. Sunday was my turning point on all this. I was fine trying to do it small, and Sunday, before I go to work, I'm sitting in my yard, and some guys in a gray truck drive by, and I'm leaning, I'm here from there from the road, and they holler out the window, and then we're cutting right through this yard. I'm going to tell you, that was my turning point to this whole thing. And I'm sorry that I feel this way about it. Josh, it's nothing with what y'all are doing. I agree with what you're doing and stuff. It's just, we've got to get control of this stuff before we can, you know, do this, or I feel that's the way I feel. Thank you all for listening.
Norm, I know you're here. I saw you earlier. Oh, there you are.
Norm Sinkel, 41 Oakmont Circle. I can't add much to what he said, except we went through the same thing on Oakmont Park a while back until we were able to, you guys were able to shut it down, and we really appreciate it. It's made it much, much better, and the police are there right around dusk, and they clear it out, and we don't have to worry at night as much. Along the same lines, that's what he was here for. I was asking, looking today for a place to park a boat trailer, and it's up in that area where the proposed Frisbee Golf Course is. And I'm kind of in the other direction of, it'd be nice if we had that expanded slightly so it's more organized, it looks better. And instead of bringing more people into that area and traffic and noise for the neighbors, that would help keep it down some, minimal cost, just a little bit of clearing, some gravel, a little grading, whereas the golf course, I think, would require a great deal of structure, bringing in dirt after you take out the trees, and then upkeep on the grass, that sort of thing. The marina is kind of a focal point for the city, and, let's see, get my notes here. Minimal impact to expanding, no traffic is really created by the parking. Let's see, it would, could be cleared a little bit more to create a fire break for those people who do live in that area for that point, because people still go out there like Ronnie said. And I watched one truck one night drive underneath that overhang, overwalk and go out, and I was just waiting for him to try to leave and slide into the water, but he made it. Let's see, fire break seven, that's about it. Oakmont Park would be a better place for this if you had some form of irrigation in there to keep some grass growing, otherwise, it's pretty much a dust bowl about eight months out of the year, if not more. So it's kind of where I'm at. I would take the bullet and rather have it in Oakmont Park where I'm living and watching it every day because it is locked up at night, and it's more, keeps the bad elements out of it, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Donna?
I'm not going to reiterate what was said by others, but I do just want you to think about, at the marina, we have 148 stalls. That means 148 boat owners in the summer and weekends coming into the parking lot and up above. If you park up above, you've got to go down those stairs, which is a little, you know, treacherous for a lot of people, so we need to think about that. What happens to all the trailers that are there? Is this a way to move the trailers out of that area? You need to think about that. Also, I wanted to reiterate what Ronnie said. We started at this part, and first, Josh, I want to thank you. You did a beautiful presentation and beautiful together reading the agenda. But anyway, Smith Park was started several years ago. A council person had a group of young people. It was approved to do at this park. Our city staff did a lot of work shredding, cutting trees. Back there behind the lake, it was kind of, the houses were quite a distance away from it. So what happened to that? Why was that, why is that not considered a site for it? Anyway, just something to think about, but I do want you to think about the safety issues and the parking issues with that. And I know I've got three minutes, and that agenda, thank you, Dennis, for saying it'll never happen again. I've spent hours on your agenda, and I've got three minutes to address it. So I want to address the dumpsters. I have concerns reading of some of the, what's going to be the expectations for our limited commercial businesses that we have in this area now. Now, we're going to expect them by 2024, the date's not on there, but 2024, to do an expensive apron to the property, 12 feet by 15 inches deep. Imagine that in Morgan's Point. Also, the building, the slab has to be a 12 by 12 slab. I want to know in these, the strip centers, you know, we don't have sewer systems like some of these other cities that have these very stringent dumpster regulations. We have septic. Where are the septic lines? Where are the septic tanks? Where are they going to put these dumpsters? How are they going to have the room to do this huge apron access? And then once again, we're dictating what materials they put on this. I don't know if state law allows us to do that. It does not allow us to do that anymore with homes. So are we allowed to dictate what type of materials they use for their dumpster enclosure? And the other thing is, what horrible problem are we having out here with it? I realize there's some unsightly things. Could we not regulate that with some of our current ordinance we have on trash and litter and that type of thing? We cannot regulate aesthetics. We can't regulate ugly. That's not a law. So the other thing is, of course, you know, I'm not even going to get into the audits. I've preached audits for two years. I'm happy that that's on the agenda where we can talk about it. The other thing is, I wanted you to know that the city has done five-year road studies forever. We've always had a five-year, and by a study, I'm talking about, it could be our people going out, it could be an engineer, but we always had a plan in place. Our last study went out in 2020, 2021. We had an engineer that came in, did a visual, and just like Dalton says, this is not, the engineering study was not in depth, didn't tell us what materials that needed, what to do. It was just, we said, give a simple study on the worst roads in Morgan's Point, so when every citizen comes to us and needs their roads done, we can go, an engineer determined these are the worst. So we have that, and maybe that's a work in process right now, but I wanted y'all to know, since you're a new council, that that does exist. And I could say 100 other things, but I'm not going to, but please, council, do not feel, when I read through those studies, the communication one, the social media one, the safety one, there's so many questions I would be asking, and it took a long time to read them. Do not feel compelled, do not let people tell you, you're kicking the can down the road, and you're delaying. Your job is to do the best thing, and I know y'all want to do that for the city. If you need more time, take more time. These are big, expensive decisions you're making, and thank you, I appreciate y'all so much.
Thank you, Donna. Okay, Bruce, I got it right this time. I'm sorry, Terry. Didn't mean to do that. Apologize for that.
I might have to ask permission to talk. But Bruce Lindhart, number 9 Wyatt Earp. Yeah, the disc golf thing, several concerns, obviously, safety is one of the big ones. Who's going to maintain it? Who's going to keep it clean? The other thing is, they're proposing that we're going to use actually city staff to do the work on it. I think that's an extra expense to the citizens and to the community. What's that expense going to be? It's got to be some kind of number that's thrown out there. Also, it just seems weird to me that asking the city to put up $10,000 upfront to fund this thing would no guarantee of getting the money back. So some things to consider there. The other thing, you know, yeah, a lot of people didn't know about this because it wasn't publicized. I mean, if there's going to be something like this going on, the property owners that are going to be affected by it should be notified well before it comes to the council to vote on. I mean, everybody does that. Anybody that's affected gets, you know, 20, 30-day notice. And then the road study, yeah. I mean, yeah, you know, the point is that you can, if you get an engineer to come out and do it, and they say, we're going to fix this road or this road or that road, then the monkey's off your back, right? But I can tell you, because I work with, with construction companies and contractors, you can have five contractors come out, survey your roads, they will do it for you, and these guys work with engineers every day, so they know what roads are good and bad. Same thing will happen. If somebody complains and says, well, my road didn't get fixed, but that one did, well, that's because these contractors all said that road's in worse shape than this road. So you can prioritize it that way. Spending $50,000 on a survey or whatever the dollar is, I mean, we're not just a filthy rich city. Take that money and put it into fixing that road. Okay? And on the audit, and I'm glad to see that finally some of these audits are going to get completed, and as Dennis told me several times, Dennis, thank you for not kicking that can down the road. And that's it.
Wendy, I'm not sure I can, is it Wendy? I'm sorry. Last name?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah, unfortunately, my husband had to leave, so I feel so strongly about this. I'm getting up in front of everybody, and I'm not ever going to put myself out there. But I live on 7 Wyatt Earp. We've lived there almost 27 years, raised four children. We've been here a long time, and we heard through the grapevine about the disc golf course. We feel very shaded on this deal because, like, we feel like, how are they going to just kind of sneak this in and try to put something in our backyard? And literally, it's in our backyard. Like, I mean, it is going to, two of those, we saw the plans, two of those disc golf things are, like, people, we're going to have strangers just walking up in our backyard. And so I feel very, we plan on living here till we die, and we really just hate to see any, and I pretty much know that anybody in our neighborhood that are backing up to that, if they even knew about this, they would be here too, because it's an invasion of your privacy. I just really think it's wrong to just, especially, like, we're a small city, and we already have a disc golf course. There is a disc golf course at Crossroads Park, which is a beautiful disc golf course. I mean, it's not that popular of a sport. I'm an avid tennis player. I put out a proposal years ago, had a ton of citizens sign it to redo our tennis courts, and it got shot down instantly. And here we have, I mean, we already have a disc golf course. What about these tennis courts? Like, I mean, for real, or pickleball is so popular. If we are truly like a resort area, I mean, resurface these courts and let people play pickleball out here. I mean, come on, that's the up and going sport. So I'm just saying, another thing is, is we aren't super rich in this community. So, I mean, I'm not big into finance, but to me, I mean, I agree, like, put the money into the roads. I mean, come on, it's not, like, look around, see what needs to be fixed, and fix it on the cheaper side of things, more frugally, because it's not like we're dealing with billions of dollars. So, I mean, I don't know, I'm not super smart in that area, but as a citizen, it just seems like a common sense that you would just kind of go to making your money stretch a little further. That's it.
Thank you, Wendy. Mark? Thank you, Wendy. Mark.
Good evening. My name is Mark Allen. I live at 48 South Cliffwood Circle, and I'd like to address the disc golf course proposal tonight. I was surprised to see in the proposal, the proposal to eliminate the boat trailer storage and replace it with a disc golf course. I'd first like to ask everybody involved to take the time to first fully understand the history of our city marina and the related trailer parking storage. I think what you'll find as you dig into the research is that the trailer parking storage area was purposely designated over 20 years ago for that trailer storage for the purpose of keeping those trailers out of the city, for the purpose of keeping them out of people's front yards and side yards and to keep our city looking good. I don't understand why we want to change that now. Do we want 100 trailers scattered around our city? I don't think so. Let's go back to what our city history was pretty thoughtful in establishing this trailer storage. I think it works very well. I'd also, I don't understand why we're creating a new park. It's to serve the disc golf community? Is that it? I saw in the proposal, we had 400 positive responses to the survey, but that survey went to five cities in this area. How many of those respondents were residents of Morgan's Point? And while you surveyed the disc golf community, did you survey the Marina patrons? Did you survey the homeowners in the area? Did anyone survey them? What about the increased traffic and the security concerns? Do we want to be a disc golf destination? I personally would like to see our focus on improving our existing parks and the marina for the benefit of our residents at Morgan's Point Resort. So I would urge, strongly urge you to reject this proposal.
Okay, so I am super nervous being up here. So if I talk really fast or if I sound mean, it's just because I'm nervous. And I'm not going to talk about the disc golf course. I actually have two parts because Jim Ann actually sent me a statement too. I haven't read that statement yet, so I don't know if she's going to give y'all hell or not. So if I get to that, I apologize. I don't know if it's appropriate for me to say or not, but I'm going to do it anyway. There's like little whispers about what's going to be happening with our city manager, with our new council. I feel bad for Dalton because he has to listen to him, so get talked, you know, whatever, he's right here and he can't say anything, so I apologize. So I'd like to point out a couple of things, though. We did notice, a couple of us did notice on executive session today that y'all are talking about the city manager. So that's a little uncomfortable because it kind of makes you wonder what you're coming in to do. And I'd like to point out a couple of things. Most of y'all ran on the fact that you love Morgan's Point, and I would like to say, okay, Jimbo's got me over here. I would like to say that I truly believe that one of the reasons that Morgan's Point is doing so well and it's doing so great, it's based on a couple of things. I love our citizens, I really, really do, but it's based on the work that Dalton's been doing. It's also based on these employees over here because they work their tails off, whether it's the ladies in the front office or it's the utilities department whose trucks are here first thing in the morning and late in the evening, or the maintenance department that comes in wherever the storms hit and they start taking the trees out to clear everything up. It's also based on the volunteers that come in. Becky, Becky does all kinds of stuff. I don't know what all she serves on over there, but she serves on all kinds of stuff, and she is constantly giving information and reporting on it all the time. Pam, running all kinds of programs. She's got volunteer services going on. Jim Ann, stuff with the library. All these people, these are the backbone of Morgan's Point. So I would hope that before you start making decisions about what's going to be happening with Dalton's future, is that you take a look at those relationships. Because what you see, whenever you see these people working and you see them with Dalton, is you see respect and you see comfortability. And I don't know him hugely on a personal level, but I trust my gut and I trust what I see with them, and this is a good place to live because of him and because of them. If you take the time to pay attention to that, then I truly, you're doing what's right for Morgan's Point. If you don't take the time, then unfortunately, I think you're doing what you think is right, not what's right for our people. So on that note, I just wanted to put that out there. If it's okay, I'm going to go ahead and do Jim Ann's. I haven't read this. I would like to thank those city council members who replied to my emails sent to all of them. I see the road study is on the agenda. I would like to request the council vote for the study tonight. I would like to address the idea of Zoom meetings for the council. I believe it was a good idea during the COVID crisis. However, I can see problems with doing it now. I was interested in how meetings were handled by those cities who have Zoom meetings. I researched them and found that there is much more involved than just making it available. How do you handle citizens' comments such as mine now? Citizens will have to be educated on the procedures of council meetings and that they are not allowed to speak during the meeting at all. How do you educate them? Some cities have citizens send their questions to the city secretary either the day before or the day of the meeting. The city secretary must then decide which questions she will read, if there are many. One city limits it to 10 statements or questions. How do you handle interruptions? If it is Zoomed, I can foresee no citizens in the audience, determine department heads reporting via Zoom, vendors reporting via Zoom, the city manager and attorney attending via Zoom, and the loss of physical contact. Is that what we want for our city? Because I don't. Thank you for your time. So apparently, Jim Ann doesn't like the idea of Zoom. So, and I don't like the idea of a new city manager. So I hope that y'all take that into consideration. Thanks.
Lanny? Or Ledlow? Yeah, is it Lanny?
Laura.
Laura. Whoa, boy, I missed you. Ooh, sorry about that.
That's all right. So I'm also here talking about the disc golf course. It does go directly behind my house. I live with my parents. My parents are very elderly. They could not make it here today. I speak on their behalf as well. My parents specifically chose that property. I'm at Laura Ledlow, Six Frank James. I am on that last street. We are that back corner. The whole entire thing surrounds the back of my house. There will be, the ends of four strips will be connected to the back of my house on the corners. My parents are very scared, my mother especially. It is very loud. I used to play disc golf myself. I know what it is, and I love the sport. I really, really do. It's loud to have 18 chain clinkings going on all the time. My dog likes to bark at anybody who walks by, and she's up on the roof, so she will see, and, sorry, y'all. I have been working really hard on her. It's going to be really hard keeping all the dogs quiet through this. It's also going to create a ton of trash everywhere. You can say you will put trash cans throughout the disc golf course. People don't use them. Most of them probably will, but there will be a lot of trash floating around back there. There will have to constantly be people back there mowing and taking care of those. According to the American Society for Golf Course Architects, to have an 18 hole disc golf course, you need at least 75 to 100 acres. The length of the disc golf sets are putter courses. They can be done in one swing. Nobody, I'm talking for myself, I would never travel across town to do 18 holes where I can get each one in, in one shot. Nobody is going to be walking that disc golf course and having discs come flying at your head. No disc golfer is going to want people walking across through that area because they cannot throw their discs safely. There will be discs flying into the water because that's what they do. They hit trees and they go around and they hit things. There's going to be a lot of things going on, people with their music, people talking, it's going to be noise pollution everywhere. As somebody else said, why was it not brought to the people who it is actually going to affect? It's very shady and it's very upsetting, and that is not the way that I feel like my Morgan's Point should be. We've been here for over 30 years. My parents built this house because of the green space. The more green space that we take out, the more we're just going to become like any other town. Our deer are already out in the middle of the street and in people's yards. Let's keep them their homes. Leave the trees, leave the place, leave the animals where they need to be in the woods. That's why we love our town. We love our green. And I think that covered everything that I wanted to say. I just, I don't want, I don't think this is a good idea in any way, shape, or form. There are different areas that we need to focus on instead of that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Lynn?
Me too, I'm out of space. Okay. In Mylum, 28 Morgans Point Boulevard. And good evening, mayor, council. I'm here to speak not about the disc golf, I'm here to speak about Mayor Pro Tem, and I'd like to give you my recommendation to the council for Jimbo Snyder. Jimbo has distinguished himself as a trustworthy leader who knows and cares about the concerns of all residents. He started, co-started with Sam, a place on Morgan's Point, next door Morgan's Point. People ask him questions. He was constantly the go-to man for everything, and he always made time for it, always. And he's not, it's not his way or their highway. He listens to both sides of everything and then makes an informed decision. Jimbo has been a resident since 2009. He's been actively engaged in all of the community and served in various volunteer since then. He serves as a firefighter, active volunteer firefighter. His hard work has earned him a promotion already to lieutenant and emergency manager coordinator. He also serves as public information officer. In a city with limited resources, volunteers make a huge difference in filling the gaps, allowing the city to better serve their residents. And Jimbo not only understands this, he values it, and he also volunteers. He walks the walk, talks the talk, and dedicates the time to be a volunteer. And his communication in 2021, the council strategic plan lists communication as one of the city's top goals. Jimbo has been integral in the city's communication and filling the gaps to keep the residents informed. He's dedicated countless hours for years serving as administrator of the community Facebook group, and he keeps everybody up to date. They all like him, they respect him, they trust him, and they feel truly, I mean, I don't, I don't mean to embarrass you, but they do. And so, and they believe in what he tells them, and he does his best to tell them and shoot straight. That's one thing you will always get, he shoots straight. You might not like what he has to say, but he's going to be honest about it. Jimbo has proven history of handling controversial issues with fairness and empathy. He was nominated by a council member to be on the home rule committee, where he was elected president of that committee. Even during the midst of one of the most controversial issues we've had here in Morgan's Point, home rule. As I said, he kept his wits about him. He ran it honestly, with integrity. He, we, everybody, when they felt like they needed to give a little, take a little, everybody did it, and they listened to him. And it was fabulous serving under him. I also want to say that he's had two decades, two, over two decades, as an officer in the United States Army and serving, flying a helicopter. So he's had people's lives with one button of his little thing there, you know, your handles, and he would, life or death, and he saved, you know. So he, and he has a, he can control his temper and make good judgments. Whether older residents like it or not, the younger residents pay the same taxes and deserve to have a voice and have their interests and need represented just as much as anyone else. We're not a retirement community anymore, like someone said. We need to prepare for the change, and if not, people, we will be run over. Jimbo has shown that he can bridge the gap and balance between the interest of both the older and the younger residents. He's consistently shown himself a level-headed leader who cares deeply about our community, and I think he would be fabulous if he were considered to be the Mayor Pro Tem of our little community. Thank you.
Ms. Hankins, you're next. Yeah?
This golf course, I like this golf. I think it's a very affordable sport for everybody, old and young, but please don't put it into Oakmont Park. We have actually two disc golf courses in Temple, and I think one in Belton, and they are really great for everybody. It's free, everybody can play. I feel for the people that don't want it in their own backyard, because I live next to Oakmont Park. So I have trash in my front yard frequently, noise, traffic. I would like to comment, the city, they are really great. You're closing the park at night. It made such a difference. The police is there, especially on the weekend, with the little wagon shows people their speed and stuff. It's wonderful. So you do what you can, but I would like you to do one more thing. I was standing with Stevens, talking out in the street, and somebody came down eagerly going to Oakmont Park in the afternoon, and I think he was surprised how fast people go down the road. And I live where the speed pump is, and most people slow down for the speed pump, but it's usually, and I like to call these people idiots, one or two that come down and apparently don't know there's a speed pump, or they take it as a challenge. I don't really know. So, and this is kind of the danger, these few people, you know, that randomly come. I would like you to consider either putting a second speed pump relatively close to it so it's a little bit more uncomfortable to drive over it and taking the challenge, or putting in a big speed pump that is also not that comfortable, especially in light of now these electric cars that you don't hear coming. Usually, we hear them coming, you know, you hear somebody kind of, but with electric cars, you don't really hear them. All of a sudden, they are there. So that's actually what I want to say. Please consider making it a little bit more uncomfortable and keep the park closed at night, and whatever the police does, we really appreciate what you do. Thank you.
Sean, you're still here. See you.
Wait, Sean Knuckles, 53 Hickory Drive. Lot to talk about, and no disc golf was so popular. That's a park, right? Over there? So it's going to have people in it? We can't just shut it down, right? It's not a park? It's not by the marina? The marina is like a public area, right? Okay.
Go ahead, go ahead.
All right. So, when I, let's just leave that as that. I disagree. If it's going to be a public area, then it needs to be developed, be used for everybody, not just closed down like it was during COVID. Second thing, roads. Let's not kick that can down the road, y'all. You ran on that, so let's take care of roads, and if it only costs $230,000 a mile, let's get them all done at once. Mayor Pro Tem! Let's get it done then. Mayor Pro Tem, let's go, Jimbo. And the audits. What I understand, we're got...
Sean Knuckles?
Wait, Sean Knuckles? 53 Hickory Drive. Lot to talk about, no disc golf was so popular. Um, that's a park, right? Over there? So it's going to have people in it? We can't just shut it down, right? It's not a park? It's not by the arena? The marina is like a public area, right? Okay.
Go ahead, go ahead.
All right. So, uh, when I, let's just leave that as that. I disagree. If it's going to be a public area, then it needs to be developed. It could be used for everybody, not just closed down like it was during COVID. Second thing, roads. Let's not kick that can down the road, y'all. Uh, you ran on that, so let's take care of roads. And if it only costs $230,000 a mile, let's get them all done at once. Mayor Pro Tem! Let's get it done then. Mayor Pro Tem, let's go, Jimbo. And the audits. What I understand, we're got two companies working on those, right? Let's get them done. That's it.
You bet. Thank you very much.
Oh, auxiliary.
I'll bring you up next, okay?
Okay, yeah. Quick auxiliary, Karen had to leave, so she asked that I, um, read her report. The auxiliary's ladies met Thursday, June 8th with a short meeting and adjourned to an appreciation and award ceremony. We meet monthly on the second Thursday, 6:00 PM at the Event Center, and they really want to encourage everyone to come. You don't have to be a member, but just come see what it's all about. Um, our water aerobic session began on Tuesday and Thursday for morning sessions and Monday and Wednesday for evening sessions. See our Facebook page, city website, contact Barbara Lyman for information. The auxiliary will again be handing out small USA flags from our booth at this year's Summer Fest. Plan to stop by and get your flag. Megan Cunningham and her family have some fun plans for the booth this year. Our September 23rd chili cook-off plans are coming along, September 23rd. We're planning vendors, bake sale, raffle basket, and tasting cups for people's choice. Of course, we will continue the tradition of the friendly rivalry fire department challenge. We hope to get the trophy back this year. Moffett. And just a reminder, the 5K run will not be in September with the chili cook-off. The run has been moved to March of '24 with JoJo Guzman and our auxiliary plan organizer and planner. Watch for updates. It's been a great first half of the year and we're excited about all of the upcoming events and plans for the fall and the winter. Thank you to each and every one of you for supporting our events and fundraisers. We appreciate you. Respectfully submitted, Karen Stagner, President. Thank you, Karen.
Okay, moving along with the agenda, the next item is the budget timeline. This is not something we need to vote on. It's just basically an outline of what, how, how, how we're going to proceed and what dates we use for the budget. So these are changeable? They're not cutting?
Yes, and there's going to be some, there's going to be some updates on there, too.
There may be some updates or some toward the end may not be changeable, but for the most part, just going to give you a timeframe of what we're looking at.
Okay.
Okay, club, uh, is there anybody to buy? Lynn, do you have anything to, the club, do you want to report? Okay, great.
What, thank you. And you anything for the library?
Pam Robinson, Mary Ruth Briggs Library Chairperson and Summer Reading Chairperson. I'm going to be giving the report, I think you all have it in, in your packets, but we had 7608 books in our library catalog as of May the 31st and with zero added books during the month of May. And the value of these books is $92,220. And that's probably undervalued a little. We have 286 members with one added during May, 163 volunteer hours year to date, May 31st. And, uh, I, I just might add to this, on books added, members added, volunteer hours, they're down due to the fact that the library was closed for probably two and a half weeks for early voting. And, and due to the continued reorganization of the office in there, we have not been able to process new books. And that should be rectified soon. Volunteer Day on May the 17th was canceled as the library had just opened up the waiting room and was still in tip-top shape due to having been worked on by the volunteers in April. And I want to thank all the library volunteers who assist us in keeping the library so organized and in good order. We couldn't do it without you. If you would like to become a library volunteer, we meet on the third Wednesday of the month in the library, 1:00 PM to 3:00. And our next meeting is June the 21st. You don't have to know anything, we will train you. It's real easy and it's a lot of fun. Some of you may know, uh, a group that the library sponsors called Elder Explorers at the Point. And on May the 25th, we had a meeting, coffee and colaches, and our program was presented by the NPR Fire Department with a presentation on what to do when the EMS comes to your home. We had great visuals and information from our chief on call one, hands-on instruction on medical life-saving equipment, bystander CPR, and we got to know the team. Very much enjoyed by all. And we got some great information and learned what we should do and should not do. Our next meeting is June the 29th, a Thursday, 9:00 AM to noon in the Event Center. We'll have coffee and patriotic cookies, a fun icebreaker. And our program and demonstration will be from a new local business called Stretch Lab, Flexology, with personalized demonstrations on stretching. And how you, and you can actually have, I guess I could say hands-on with it. But that didn't sound right, did it? And, uh, we're going to add a little something this time. Usually we just have a program. We're going to start doing games along with our programs. This time, we're doing bingo. And we have had quite the response, good response, for our lakeside bingo. So please join us. And, uh, you don't, you don't have to be an elder to come. We're multi-generational. Anybody can come and we welcome you. And last but not least, summer reading is starting next month. Who thought it would be here so soon? Um, the, our program is named Health is Wealth. Dates are four Saturdays, July 22nd, 29th, August 5th, and the 12th, 10:00 AM until noon. Registration is open now and we have applications available on the table as you come in and also at City Hall. And the application is now online at the city website. We will have at this program, a pediatrician, a dietitian, several, uh, let's see. Dental school students. And on the last day, we will have Responders Day at the Safety Center with a special surprise. So we get out filled backpacks the last Saturday. Each week, we hang out, hand out a baggie with school supplies that you're going to need for the coming year. And we have snacks at the end of the session. We play games, we do crafts, we read, we try to get the kids to read as much as they can. We also are needing youth volunteers for summer reading. And I have a sheet over there to, to sign up if you would. If you need volunteer hours for school or scouts, we'll be happy to send a letter to your group to verify your hours. So that's all we're doing. Thank you.
Okay, moving along. Uh, our next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. And I'd like to have a motion to accept that. Now, we're only going to look at A because we're going to vote on B separately, okay? So A is the minutes of the May 9th meeting. Oh.
No voice. Oh, hello. Okay, yes, I have some changes to the minutes. I've given them to Dalton and Ophelia and, um...
They've been corrected, have they not?
I'm almost positive, but do I need to review them or?
So, that would, I'm, I'm going to kind of kick this one to Neil, you know. So I think it would be good if y'all want to review them, especially if there's some substantiating changes.
I have three.
Yeah, and, and so if, if y'all want to go through them and y'all are good with them, then we can. If not, we can take those updates and then we can always do the minutes, you know, next month, just to make sure everybody can read all of them through, um...
I have copies for everyone.
Okay. Wait, what, whatever, however y'all want to do it.
If you're satisfied with it, there's just three items. Tell us what they are, let's move on.
Okay, great, sure. Um, and I have, so I guess we have to vote on them. But I spoke at the last council meeting and I, I just wanted to add a phrase to what I had said because it was kind of the main phrase. Then on, on G, on the agenda, um, considering additional funding for wholesale wastewater, I gave some language about, it has a proper title. It's called the City of Temple Morgan's Point Resort, quote, "The Pit," quote, "The Four Corners," and SH317 FM 2483 Master Plan. So it's really not a waste, um, yeah, it's not a waste feasibility study. It's really a master plan. So I gave the proper title for that. And then I wanted to add the dollars that, um, we approved. So I, I put the total amount in and then EDC's already funded 15,000. So I put in that we were going to fund as a city, 12,688. Um, and then we also approved for the city manager to enter an inter-local agreement between Temple and NPR. So I just wanted to clarify exactly what that item was. And then items for future agendas, um, I know we went through that really fast at the last meeting and I messed it up the first time I suggested the items because I didn't realize we had to vote on each one of them that I was suggested, suggesting. So I rephrased that so I could give Ophelia the, um, you know, the language that I had used so that they could be put into the minutes correctly. And that's pretty much it.
Those corrections, are you, are you okay with everything then?
I haven't seen them, but I, you know, I'm assuming they're going to be...
Well, I mean, we're going to see them again that next.
Uh, we're, well, can we approve it this week with?
That's up, that's up to council. If council wants to, agrees with the changes and they want to approve it as a council, then...
And I have copies. Well, it's, it's language, language. And, and then I think anytime we approve amounts, we ought to put the amount and what it's for in the minutes.
Yeah, as long as it doesn't change the substance and it's just language, I, uh, I move to accept the, the minutes.
A second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Now, a number B, that B on there, on that, uh, consent agenda has to do with signatures for our depository with Horizon Bank. Every, every year or every term, the, uh, the, uh, city manager, the city secretary, and all of the council members, along with the mayor, are signing their signature cards because they can write checks or sign checks for the city. So we need to authorize that the, that Resolution 2023.11.
Motion due.
Authorize those signatures.
I second. Steven?
Oh, okay, I didn't hear that, I'm sorry. Any discussion on that? We'll all need to go, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Please go by City Hall sometime this week. Do we have the signature cards yet, Dalton?
We could probably have them...
Oh, perfect.
Boom.
Yes, you do it here after the meeting. So please do that, appreciate it very much. Okay, committee reports, we've got, pretty much gone through the committees except for Becky and, uh...
Good evening, I am Becky Cooley with the Planning and Zoning Committee Chair. Last meeting was on May 23rd and tonight we bring to you a new ordinance for commercial garbage, garbage enclosures. Our next meeting will be on June 27th.
Done, Dan.
Next hat would be Steering Committee, and I have no update.
Thank you, Becky.
Oh, can I just ask a real quick question? The Steering Committee, do we have any clue as to when we might get a first draft of the comprehensive plan? I have asked him. I just thought maybe you would tell me. I tried, I tried.
Yeah, electors, is there any further presentations from anybody? Okay, moving right along, we're going to go into the regular agenda. First item on there is, uh, discuss and consider selection of the Mayor Pro Tem. There is a change and we talked about it earlier. It is a one-year term. It is not our decision, that is based on state law. We discovered, we'd been operating under a two-year term and now it's one-year term. So, uh, I know that one of the, one of the citizens nominated, uh, Jimbo Snyder for Mayor Pro Tem. And I'd like to see a hairy nomination for y'all, it's up to you.
Yes, I would like to nominate Roxanne Stryker, um, to be, and, and I've talked to her and she has agreed and she's going to extra classes to learn, you know, protocol and whatever we need to do. So that's another option for us.
Anybody else?
I second Roxanne Stryker.
Okay, any other discussion, anybody else? The only nomination would be Roxanne, okay? Sister Wood, what, on second on Jimbo would be Roxanne, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, none opposed, so Roxanne, you're Mayor Pro Tem.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Next item on there is discuss, consider adopting Resolution 2023.14, and that is appointment of municipal court judge. In the past, we have had, uh, Judge Duffy, who has been our, our judge. I guess he's still in line, he'd do it again if he's nominated, is that correct? Do I hear, do I? I'd like somebody to, to open the discussion on 2023.14, please.
I make a motion that we open the discussion.
A second.
So discuss?
I'm sorry?
I, I made a motion, Jimbo seconded it.
Okay. Now, oh, okay. Is there any discussion on that?
Yeah, the only, the only question I had, um, in whether or not we wanted to consider it because I'm pretty sure he's, uh, he's going to come on board with us again, is, um, whether or not, uh, we needed to look at a one-year, potentially a one-year term versus two. Uh, and the only reason I say that is because with the staggered terms looming over the horizon now, there's a potential that some of us may not be sitting here, um, next year. So do we want to give a potential future council the ability to bring the judge back on board? That's, that's the only thing, the only little fleeting thought.
Yeah, I thought if we went to staggered terms, that we were voted in for two-year terms. So the staggered terms would, and I know Dalton's looking into this with Neil, so maybe Neil knows. But we were elected for two years, so then the staggered terms would kick in at that point. Oh, okay. So it's our choice, okay.
Okay, yeah, if that's... Neil? Can you turn your mic on, please?
If you don't work, if you don't vote to change it, then everybody would serve their two-year terms. And then, at the elections again in two years, then the council would consider whether or not to have staggered terms then.
But we can vote to have staggered terms. And at that point, we make it effective immediately and somebody goes to one year?
You need to do it during this, you need to do it during the first year of this two-year term.
Will it be law by then?
So the law, so the, it is, HP 1434 has been signed by the governor. It wasn't in time to come on this council meeting, which is probably a good thing since it's long. So yes, it is signed by, they had two-thirds of the vote on both floors and it's effective immediately. So what all that means is if council chooses to go staggered terms, based off the way the law is written, it just retros back to the old methodology of general law. So y'all would vote by simple majority to, yes, staggered terms. And then there basically is, three people would draw straws. And then come May of next year, then there would be an election May of next year. So three people would get one-year terms and then it would reset back. Then it'll be staggered terms at that point.
So we couldn't just serve out our terms and then, I mean, let's maybe say we vote for it next year?
Talking about staggered terms right now?
Okay, sorry.
Right now, we're on...
That's going to be on next month's agenda.
Okay, all right, next month.
Yeah, so, um, with all that discussion, without getting bogged down, I, I'll retract that concern and, uh, um, I make a motion to accept 202314.
I'll second.
Okay, we've discussed it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed?
I just want to clarify that that is approving Judge Duffield as their, our judge-
Okay.
For two-year term.
Does that agree with everybody?
Is that what we s-
Yes.
Is that what we said?
Yeah, but is that, is that-
Okay, yeah.
Said you would come in, I swear you in or swear you out. Swear at you.
You always swear at me.
Well, let's try to keep it clean today.
I even bought my own form.
Okay, listen, listen. You're going to do that to me, aren't you?
Sorry?
Well, you're going to read it. I can't read.
I also haven't.
All right. All right. So-
I solemnly swear or affirm that I have not directly or indirectly paid, offered, offered promise to pay, contributed or promised to contribute any money or anything of value or promised any public office or employment. As a reward received or secured my appointment or confirmation thereof, so help me God.
Woo! I, Theodore R. Duffield, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully execute
the duties of the office of the judge of the city of Morgan's Point in the state of Texas and will, and will to the best of my ability preserve, protect and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state, so help me God. Congratulations.
Thank you for letting us level through that one. Woo! I didn't get to practice it because I didn't have the, I didn't have the memo. Okay, next on the, on the agenda here. Okay, I'd like to have a resolution 2023 point 12, selection of official newspaper.
Can I have one?
You want to say something? Yeah.
Ladies and gentlemen, I want to thank you. I've, I've served you for 25 years. And I've enjoyed every minute of it. Some of you I know professionally, others I don't totally. And I know you think you know me from in the red suit, but that may not be me. And I just wanted to get your attention, let you know that you have good staff and they try to take care of you. I am, I'm, you know, I'm going to lean a little bit, but I'm leaning stuff over here on the table. I wanted to explain to the council and everybody openly that, uh, for 10 years, I've been trying to get scoff law in the county. And they finally passed it and the lawyers got through and then Dr. Harvard Motor Vehicles and everybody else got through it. Let me take what the scoff law does. So for the county, right this moment, the scoff law says that if you owe a ticket to the county, that you can't rest your vehicle. And so you take care of the ticket.
Wow.
Okay? That's on a yearly basis. I am fighting tooth and nail and I want Morgan's Point to be the first city. I want, it'll have to come from the county commissioners and everybody else. You all have to shake hands and do everything else. But I want all those tickets that are in Morgan's Point, right now, the ballpark of about 2,400 tickets that are open.
Wow, I have no idea.
And, and the way this works is that if this, if this ticket, the city of Morgan's Point, we've signed an agreement, a mutual agreement with the city, with the county. So if your fine is $200, then there's another $20 added to it. The city of Morgan's Point, they're owed $200. The $20 is paid by the offender. County gets it. And then they can go rest your vehicle. So in 2012, the Doggo County went on this program, similar type program, and for three years, they got, they found out, they were collecting $10 million every year. And a thou, and a million dollars off of the $20. But I want Morgan's Point to be the first city to consider joining the county and taking those, that, those 2,400 tickets, ballparking it just for y'all, is around 500 to 600,000 dollars. Now, what that means is, is that if that amount is collected, then, in general terms of, because it's, uh, more complicated, half of that stays here in the city and the other half goes to the county. So it's worth about $200,000 to the city of Morgan's Point. And I've got flyers on here.
Mile of road.
That'll get a mile.
I just want y'all to know that that program is ineffective in Bell County. It's going to take a while for us to get where we need to be for y'all to join us. I'm sure, like, bringing y'all on board and I'm sure you don't need the $200,000. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Before then, Merry Christmas and happy birthday. Happy Flat Day and I'll see y'all before the program.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Judge. Okay, then going right along, resolution 2023 point 12, resolution designating the Belton Journal as the official newspaper for the city of Morgan's Point.
Open for discussion. I open for discussion.
Second.
Second, okay. Is there any discussion?
I have one question and maybe this is to Esther. Can either paper tell us how many Morgan's Point residents take their paper? Can Temple tell us how many residents take Temple and Belton tell us how many residents take Belton? Because that may sway our opinion based on who has the best reach for our residents. I'm not one to change it because maybe the citizens are used to Belton, but if we're reaching more people with Temple, maybe we should look into that.
We could get in contact with both, with our contact at each of those papers and we could ask that question if council chooses.
I don't want to hold up the process, maybe next year?
I mean, being that it's designated, we can still, we can still do the same thing in both papers for advertising and things like that, so it doesn't stop us from doing that, so.
Yeah, we typically, we typically do. So, you know, I know Belton Journal has had a lot of history with Morgan's Point Resort, you know, and the tradition of that, you know, it's pretty common. So yeah, if, if there needs to be kind of a day-to-day publication that we have to get it out, you know, time-sensitive, we will put it in Temple and Belton.
Because they're daily.
Because they're daily. So we, we work through it and Belton Journal is, is cheap, you know, they take care of us, so.
Should we designate both of them then? Because if we're using both of them?
It makes a difference.
You can only designate one.
Oh, okay.
Motion to accept resolution 2023 point 12.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I just, I'll just reinforce that. They, the Belton Journal did ask us, sent us questionnaires for city council and they printed them verbatim. It was very objective, there was nothing, so I, I highly agree.
Very good.
Yeah, I highly agree with the Belton-
I just was thinking of reach, that's all.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Okay, next one, discussing consider nominating Bell County Health Representative for the city.
Open for discussion.
I'll second to open for discussion. Are we supposed to second for open for discussion?
You are.
Okay, I'll second.
Okay, yeah, if you, okay, you accepted it, okay? Yeah, I'm open, open for discussion.
So, simple, John Mosley had served the community for many years. He retired, you know, sometime last year. Requirements are pretty simple, you got to be a Bell County resident for at least three years. They don't have to be, have a medical background. John Mosley did not and the board actually really appreciated the fact that he brought a different perspective. Don't really have any ideas, so we kind of just wanted to open it for discussion and kick it to y'all. It doesn't need to be decided on, you know, tonight if y'all still want some more time, but if y'all do have nominations and you want, then they could be, and you've already reached out to them and they're good with it, then-
Has anybody approached us to do that?
I've, I've, I've approached someone to do that.
Okay, they accepted or?
They said that they would, they would, yeah. It's Bruce Lennon Art.
Certainly is. Accepted.
So do we discuss or just?
I mean, I'm still in discussion mode, but I would do a motion to nominate Bruce.
I would second.
Any, uh, any discussion on that? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, I guess.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you, Bruce.
Woo-hoo!
Whatever that does, congratulations.
Yeah, right.
Okay, now for the good one. Discussing-
Let's get on with it.
A proposal to add an 18-hole disc golf course near the Morgan's Point Marina.
I'll open for discussion?
Second.
Open for discussion.
I have some question, oh, I'm sorry, were you up? I thought it was disc golf.
He's going to do the presentation.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'd like to say, I didn't know there were so many passionate disc golf fans here in the city. So, agenda for the presentations, the overall plan and design, reasoning, local support, dual functionality and cost of business plan. Plan and design, the overall plan for the disc golf course is to make use of the unused property of the Morgan's Point Marina and to bring like a resort-style destination to the city. Plan is there will be an 18-hole disc golf course installed in the thick wooded property at the top of the marina. The Corps of Engineers has granted us permission to build on the course and the city property that is below the floodline when they approve of removing any of the brush that's in there. It will begin and end at the, at the end of the gravel parking lot at the top of the marina where the parking is permitted. The course's design, the course design will take into account the courts property and the citizens near the, or citizens property near the course. The fairways will be cleared out by volunteers and the city maintenance department. The trees will be removed with, the trees being removed will be invasive species such as cedar trees, as well as removing all dead trees from the property. All trees such as oaks and et cetera will be, will remain on the property untouched. Fairways being cleared out will also assist with reducing wildfire danger in the city by removing fuel for fire. There will be 18 baskets installed on the property that will be secured in the ground with a metal sleeve that allows the baskets to be removed with ease. Each hole will have a seven-foot by seven, or seven-foot by 12-foot T-box installed for it. The T-box will consist of a wooden frame with a turf cover, limiting, eliminating the alteration of the property. Alongside the T-batts will include a small sign that describes the holes, just minimalizing everything we do to the property. The reasoning, the reasoning for the course is to add another destination to the city. The resort disc golf course at Anse has been a staple of the beginner-level disc golf community since its installation. The recorded stats show that the course has been played over 740 times since its installation. This also doesn't include the numerous people and families that play the course without the app keeping track of their stats. The course has opened up many people to the sport of disc golf with more and more starting to play. It is the fourth-largest growing sport in the nation. In addition, the criminal mischief at Anse Park has decreased since the installation of the course. There hasn't been one sharpie mark placed on a basket at the course. I believe the qual, quality and quantity of people that have been playing at Anse has decreased the likelihood of graffiti and other problems in the area. A new full-size course will bring more people in the city, exposing them to what the city has to offer, such as the lakes, restaurants, stores and parks. After taking a recent poll from the Morgan's Point, Temple, Belton, Colina and Disc Golf communities, I received over 400 votes in support of getting a course built here, over 40 of which were from Morgan's Point. The local disc golf store in Belton, Discaholics, is also a supporter of the course. I have many people that are excited and willing to volunteer to help to get the course installed and maintained after installation. Enormous people and children of central Texas love the idea of a lakeside disc golf course. I think it has the potential to be the best-looking course in the area. The course will double as an improved walk-in trail for the citizens of the city and surrounding areas. The cleared-out fairways will make the property safer and more accessible for people looking to walk near the lake and the marina, which is public property. The cost and business plan, the baskets will be priority T2 baskets. The 18 baskets will cost $7,075 with shipping included. The cost of wood, turf and other supplies, wood at max, costs $3,000. I used a high estimate to give an even number with the plan to spend less, with the plan that would spend less than $3,000. All the startup costs would be $10,000 with the main cost being the baskets. All of that money will come from the parks budget. The plan we've established will be that the city covers the cost to start the course and local businesses will sponsor the holes within the first three months the course being installed. We have spoke to many businesses, including ones here in the city, that have expressed interest in paying for holes or multiple holes. The plan will, will be to have the city fully reimbursed by sponsorships. Additional costs will be covered by course, hosting, local tournaments. Options will be for the city to charge a fee to use the property to host a tournament or charge a fee per person that has signed up for that day. I believe that Twin Cove Disc Golf Course will be a long-lasting source of fun and opportunity for the city of Morgan's Point Resort. There are unlimited options for events to host with the course being involved, such as the Fourth of July. An example would be the Fourth of July Throwdown Tournament that we, we could connect to the Fourth of, Fourth of July celebration that we have. With already the massive support of the local communities, I hope the city, hope to get the city's support and make it a family-friendly park. That's the end of the presentation. I do have a list of replies to concerns. So in the proposal, it's not-
I just asked for just a point of interest. I didn't hear you say how many Morgan's Point Resort residents?
It was, I think it was 42.
42, okay, thank you.
In the proposal, it states nothing about the disc golf or the boat trailer storage being affected. The course is going to be designed to go around that, so that won't be involved. Smith Park was the original location we wanted to build a course at, but was told to pursue the marina instead. From my understanding, the Corps didn't approve a course at Smith Park due to protective It's going to be cleaned out and the Corps, so the Morgan's Point leases a small portion of property from the Corps, but that includes just the marina and down by the parking lot, the whole section down there. The upper part is city property slash Corps property because it's all below the floodline. So you have to get permission from the Corps to even do anything with that property. The property being used is the city slash course property and there's nothing being built on private property. The course design was a rough draft that is subject to change to accommodate the Corps of Engineers and the citizens. It would be designed to accommodate residents and protect their property. Like I said, it's public land and it's the fourth-fastest-growing sport in the country. And in regards to the pickleball comment, there is pickleball coming to the corner of 2305 and FM 2271. The money of the course, yeah, it's, it's, it's in the area.
That's good to know.
Yeah.
So on, the other thing too, and just wanted to kind of address it with, like, some of the other current parks and some of the other areas, the tennis folks, pickleball folks did come to me about a year and a half, maybe two years ago. It was, it did not get not rejected. It wasn't rejected. They actually had a large following that said they would love to donate the course and they would, you know, bring, you know, their own kind of stuff in it, kind of, you know, potentially rename the course. I kind of kicked it to them, they were all excited about it, and then crickets. So I didn't hear anything, you know, from some of them. So I talked to somebody at, at dinner one night and they kind of said, you know, hey, it kind of fell out. But again, anything like that, we would love to address it. I think I agree that parks need to be, you know, continuously maintained. But yeah, I just wanted to address the pickleball and tennis stuff because, yeah, we, we did have people approach us, we did look into it and they said that they were going to kind of research it and they never got back with us on it.
Josh, first of all, I just want to say thank you for preparing this, man. You did a great job. It's well done.
I have like four more little points, just to address everything, the concerns. So the property is going to be maintained by volunteers after the course is constructed. So, the property's gonna be maintained by volunteers after the course is constructed. It's gonna be a low maintenance area where, where it's, and through, I've already walked the property, there's no grass that really grows that would be, need to be mowed. There's not gonna be any leveling, building, bringing stuff in. Everything that's gonna be removed is the underbrush and the cedar trees, which is the invasive species. Also, to address the stereotypes, coming from a police officer who plays disc golf, there's a negative light cast in disc golfers based on datish and embellished stereotypes. In the year two thousand twenty-three, as a community, we should be past generalized stereotypes, accepting all. And also, trash has not been an issue at the parks since the installation of the disc golf course at Anse Park. Uh, the disc golf community's been well-respected, they're respecting the property and picking up most of their trash. Also, it's recommended that you have about one acre per disc golf hole. The marina is twenty-three point four eight seven acres that we had to work with. Seventy-five to a hundred acres would be for a high-level pro-regular dis, or not a disc golf course, a ball golf course. And so, one acre for eighteen holes is eighteen acres. We have twenty-three acres, so it's more than enough property to make a, a high-level disc golf course. And that's all I got.
Thank you, Sarah, appreciate that. If we have questions, you'll be here for a moment, right? In case there's questions. So, I know there, we're opening it up for discussion still.
Oh, okay. I have, um, I would like to, for us to, um, talk about the Parks and Rec Committee that's coming up later on the agenda. Um, because I think this is a perfect opportunity for us to establish, um, taking a look at all of our parks. I mean, we already have four parks. I don't, I'm not necessarily in favor of creating a fifth park. I'd like to, you know, invest in our current parks. We, and, and a lot of these people mentioned before, but we do have a twenty-seven-hole disc golf facility within five miles of us at Crossroads and Temple. And then I was gonna say, I've had at least four residents call me on this, um, but I don't think I need to say that. And that's really my big point. I'd just like to, let's, let's get a group together that maybe can represent us on Parks and Rec, take a look at everything and take it from there. So, not approve this at this time.
Are you at a table, you wanna table it, is that basically what?
That's what it's called, yeah. I just don't wanna approve it at this time, or table it, or-
I just, I just wanna add to the discussion though, because I was, um, wondering about, you know, there's people who've said to me, we need a splash pad for our kids.
Right.
And we've had people say, we need to improve our pickleball court. And since we already have a disc golf course in Anse Park, I'm not, I'm just wondering if that's the wisest-
Well, that's what we could do with the Parks to deal. I mean, that, that's been the discussion there. Right now, we're just talking about the, about the disc golf. But you're right, and that would be, that would be, we don't know what the criteria is on the Parks Committee. We'll, we'll have to-
I, I, I have, um, I sent a, a sample from Phoenix to everybody, and I have copies if we wanna look at them, when it comes up on the agenda.
Comes up on the agenda, that's good. So, uh, there's a motion to table that, is that correct? Your second? Okay, and we were ahead of discussion, so I'm gonna put it up for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next one is discussing consider video teleconferencing requirements and recommendations for the city council meeting. Dalton, I'm gonna, I'm gonna kinda turn that and back over to you, you have the info, I do not.
Um, I'm gonna-
Open for discussion?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
I'll second.
Yeah, I'm, uh, I know that was, um, put on the agenda for, either for future agenda. I can't remember who it was, but-
Me, and I think also Pat wanted it.
Yeah, and so, I'm, uh, we kinda put the memo and stuff together as far as our thoughts on it. Uh, there is requirements. Uh, we don't think it's the best option, but I think, leave it open for discussion, and then, we just wanted to provide the information to councils so they, so they can make the decision on that one.
Well, I'll just state that I was for Zoom meeting, because I have a ninety-five-year-old mother in Minnesota who I have to attend occasionally. But I've talked to several citizens throughout the month, and I read through this, and it's way more complicated than I thought. So, at this point, I would vote no.
Okay, well then, I'm gonna sit your, this for voting, uh, do I-
Can we discuss?
To accept that?
That was my discussion, I'm sorry.
Okay, I, I-
Put it up to a vote, I mean, we can still discuss it, you can turn it down.
Oh, okay. No, I, I wanna, I just wanna ask, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I think it is more complicated than we first thought. But after the COVID thing, I think, you know, we've all gotten used to video conferencing. Businesses, I mean, Google isn't even going back to work, that I heard. They're gonna keep everybody on, on virtual. It, it would seem like we need to get into-
It's not, it's not visual, they're still on video.
Yeah, eh, but whether you can run them, you know, things on, uh, video conferencing, this meeting, uh, I think is, is, if I read this right, Dalton, there is still a question as to whether or not legally we could run this meeting virtual.
So, yes, sir, you can run the meeting legally. The key is, it has to still have a quorum of council present at a physical location.
And that up for, is that up for discussion by the, the, the state?
Uh, no, that, so, this, during COVID, uh, Governor Abbott, don't quote me on dates, they repealed or suspended the Open Meetings Act to basically allow everybody to conduct business through a quorum through Zoom. September of two thousand twenty-one, I believe, or something close by there, he then repealed that suspension, which then went it back, went back to the same. Uh, meant all the requirements fall under the Director of Information Resources. So, from the video teleconferencing perspective, y'all could do it, and you could have a governing body member vote in, you know, Neverland. But the requirement is, they have to follow, you know, follow the, the requirements of the video teleconferencing one. A physical quor, a present, a quorum of council has to be physically present at a location on the agenda. And whoever is gonna be governing body-wise has to be mentioned on the agenda that they are video teleconferencing. And then, from the technology side, you have to have basically TV screens or screens to where y'all can see whoever is out. And then, the audience has to be able to see all of that, plus on the live stream as well. So, it would, that, the technology piece and, and kinda just the setup with the TVs, we'd be, we'd have to bring either TVs or other, other things in here. Because then the requirement of the screens and TVs has to be suitable based off of science and-
Sounds like something when we had more money.
Yeah, do we have, do we have an estimate on cost?
So, there is an estimate in there, and I think it's probably not accurate, I think it's-
That's the IT cost, that's the IT cost.
Right, and honestly, uh, you know, I'm a technology guy. I think that there's a reason we shouldn't do it, honestly. Like, that's where I, I land. Um, I don't think, I think the number was something like nine thousand, and I had a conversation with Dalton about this already. You know, it's the twenty-first century, you know?
Yeah, well, it, yeah, I'd like to know the cost of, you know, the hardware, if we have to get a TV, or if we have a TV, or-
Broken, we do have to get a new one. We haven't replaced that one, just because we were kinda looking at, um, the security and safety requirements. So, this one had gotten damaged and it never got caught. It, it works, but it's got lines and stuff in it. Yeah, and so, that one, that TV, while it would work potentially for council, we would have to figure out other monitors to be able to put, so everybody can see. Or we could just have it really awkward, and everybody could turn the chairs around and just watch that. Uh, but that, I think that would be pretty awkward for the audience to be facing away from us.
Well, I agree, uh, you know, I, I concur, yeah, it's twenty-first century, world is moving forward, but the concerns I have are, number one, the cost. I don't think that's something we really need to be dumping money into right now, just to, you know, there's only five of us.
But we don't know a cost.
It's, it's gonna be too much for me. So, I, I just don't think that's something we need to be spending money on just for the five of us. I mean, um, I, I, I just can't support that. I think it opens a Pandora's box, I think gives us as a council an opportunity to say, eh, not gonna go tonight, I'm just gonna phone in. Um, we were elected to be here, so-
We'd still have to have a quorum.
We have to have a-
Oh, I, I agree, I agree. But we were elected to be here, we know every second Tuesday, this is when we meet, so I just think, you know, we have a duty as citizens to be here. So, that's just my two cents.
Well, I don't think you're not here if you're on a video conference. I mean, businesses and governments all over the world are, are doing this.
If you're on video conference, can you meet and greet the citizens ten minutes before?
You can, if you wish to do that.
If you're on video conference?
Sure.
Good luck pulling that one off. And Pat, I, I say that not to be a smart donkey, um, and I'm not bussing our IT department. We can barely get these things to work half the time. So, you know, I just think that's a bridge too far.
That's true.
Love you, Esther, I do.
That's, that was not on her, that's, that's before her time.
Yeah, I, 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 I agree with all of that point, but I, I think rather than just say no, I think we oughta-
Listen, that's why I'm not do this right here, is, it's kinda, most of y'all are not really for it. Why don't we put it on a table, and let's look at it somewhere down the line?
Yes, yes, I, I think it's a viable option.
I'm good with that. I don't want it to die, I'm sorry.
We just don't need to spend a whole lot of money on something. But I, I think that the, we should have the option in the future when we can hard-
We could always face-
Get it down to where we can say, okay, this is what we have to have, and this is how we have it done, assuming that it's even legal to do that.
We can always address it at another time, I mean, that's, at a time.
Yeah.
For that.
So, I would move that we table the, uh, video conferencing, um, I don't know what number it is.
I'll second too.
And table it to bring up again, maybe six months. I, I mean, should we just set a date?
Just table, table it then.
Table, just table, okay. I'm, I move to just table the video conferencing for, at this time.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, we're gonna deny it for, for table it. Okay, and the next one on the recommendation is, uh, discuss consider the RAS payment and sa, and asset management services proposal. It's in your packet, that's the one on the road, so we, uh-
Mr. Mayor, could I request that we possibly, um, discuss that after we discuss the next agenda item, which is to consider how we're gonna do the roads? Because I think that would be-
All right, eh, can we do what now?
Eh, could we, could we put the, let's see, which one is it?
It's the next one.
The next one down. Uh, discuss a number-
Number I?
I, could we discuss that first, and then H, because it seems like that's more of an order that it's gonna go in? If, I'm, if not, that's fine.
Okay.
Um, the, so the, and, and this is up to y'all, the RAS was, you know, recommended by, uh, Councilmember Snyder. And so, since it was a request, you know, by it, and again, there's no organization really to it, other than we put the roads by each other. So, however they wanna do it, if they wanna discuss the roads, I before the other one, again, RAS is on there because of Councilmember Snyder requesting it from the mayor and I. To the mayor.
That's all, I was just requesting that we-
Go ahead, if you, I figured you had a statement, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I just requesting that we just moved him around, because it seemed like, um, it, it followed the flow better of what we're all gonna be discussing.
I'll second that, we just start with I.
Okay.
Okay, do we open it for discussion?
Open for discussion.
Okay.
Second that.
Um, I, I would say, I'm gonna kick this to Councilmember Snyder. Roads would not have been on the agenda, uh, this month if it wasn't for him, uh, requesting something on here, so I'm gonna kinda kick it to him.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm gonna, I understand what you're saying, Roxanne, I'm just gonna kinda lump H and I together, and we'll just call it high. So, I asked, uh, the reason I, you know, we discussed briefly during the, um, during the workshop, the reason I asked to put that back on there, and, um, just listening to, man, I tell you, it's fun being up here, listening to the, I don't know, listening to the, both sides of the citizens, and I appreciate both sides, really I do. Um, the reason I asked to have that put back on there was, um, just going through the notes and some of the things that we keep hearing over and over again, and, and previous council heard it too, was, you know, we're studied out. Um, but in my mind, we have to have a study, and I think we would all agree with that. Uh, we have to have a study to look at where we start. We don't know where we're gonna start. We can look at the different techniques and the different methods to fix our roads, but if we don't know where we start with our roads, we're just kinda spinning our wheels. Um, I agree one hundred percent that we need multiple bids, um, with just about everything that we do. Uh, and the reason I'm comfortable with going with RAS is I look at the KPA indicator, or the KPA notes, um, from two thousand twenty-two, and it was about forty-four thousand. So, that was a couple of years ago. Uh, so that is a method, a technique, that is in essence, one bid. RAS came in at about forty-eight thousand, um, more recently, different techniques, different methods, another bid. So, they generally seem to be under fifty K. Uh, I know that sounds like a lot of money, it is. I don't mean to downplay that, but it's about one percent of the budget. If we don't get a study started and completed, it's gonna be two more years before we get any, anything moving, and Larry's gonna be dead by then, so, um-
I hope not.
No, you know, I'm kidding. Had a buddy who said, "Love you like a plague cousin," so, um- Yeah, um, yeah. So, that's why I requested RAS be put back on there. You know, looking at what they bring, they do bring something, uh, to the table, other than Love BJ and the crew, but those guys, uh, I've seen them on a Bobcat. I don't want those guys driving around looking at a road saying, "Pick this one, pick that one." I personally think RAS, just with what they bring and the technological advances that they have, I think it's a good way for us to go. Um, that's why I asked for that to be put back on there. After we get that survey, then I think by all means, we absolutely need to figure out, not just which roads we're gonna start with, but how we're gonna do them. And we need to look long-term.
If I read that correctly, and remember from that, um, workshop that we had with them, they're gonna, they can provide us with a, a list of, of, of good to bad roads. And then, how do you work on fixing them? And then, what is that gonna cost, so you can prioritize it in a logical, to me, a more, a more logical way that is defendable? Not that we're, I'm trying to be defensive or anything, but if it, if, if we don't have a systematic way of going about it, then it's just kinda random sort.
Yeah, the thing I liked about that, uh, that proposal, for those that might not have been there, the thi, the thing that I walked away with from that, um, was they, they're, in their presentation, they discussed different levels, which kinda went over my head, but I'm like, okay, got it, one bad, seven good. And they were different levels of, of quality of road, if that's the right way to put it. And the interesting part was, for me, with my pea brain, if I see a road one, that tells Jimbo, hey, that's the road you need to start on. But what they said, that is not always the case. Um, yeah, we're gonna upset citizens, but what you need to look at, obviously, the seven roads, you're not gonna work on those right away. But you're gonna wanna tend to some of those ones in the middle, because if you neglect those out the gate, those are gonna become ones really fast. And then you're gonna have three road sevens and fifty-five road ones. Um, that's why I really appreciated their, their presentation, because it wasn't just, we're gonna spit out some numbers, say, bad road, good road, middle road, and let's go, go from there. Um, that little schematic that they had with the highlighted colors and, and, eh, I think it really shows us, once you dove into it, it really shows us, these are the roads we need to work on, which were kinda in the middle of the road, roads. Um, and get to those, oh yeah, get to these guys right away, but don't neglect everything getting there, if that makes sense. So, um, again, I was a fan, I, I think it's kind of, yeah, it's probably up there in price range, but again, if you look at KPA two years ago, it was forty-five K, so-
So, I took that totally different when they did that part of their, their sales pitch. And again, I don't know if I'm right or wrong, but, you know, they were, were doing their triage, we'll call it, and, you know, they were trying to sell a product that essentially was going for road maintenance, that's pretty expensive products. And he even said, "Well, this is the first road we should do." And that road was probably maybe three years old, and I'm thinking to myself, there's roads that haven't been done here in thirty years, and we're talking about doing maintenance? And so, you know, and again, we both have different perspectives, so disrespect there, but, yeah, well, I-
And I agree a hundred percent, and I, and I like the fact that you've mentioned that. It, it was absolutely a sales pitch. I got it, these companies come in to make money. Companies stay in business if they don't make money.
Sure.
Um, and one of the things I, I do like about that as well, uh, is ultimately, we have the ability as a council and as a community, if these guys come in and do this survey for us, and they say, "This is your number one roads, these are your number threes, these are your number sevens." We can take a look at that, and we can have BJ and our maintenance crew come in and say, "That fucking dope, those are number one roads." You need to get to them right now, if that makes sense, so, um-
But that's, this is where I'm going, Jimbo, so you just said, so BJ and the guys can go and they can say, "Hey, these roads are wrong." Like, man, they could do that with a Sharpie right now and a highlighter, they could say, "This road is horrible." I mean, they're awesome guys, they know what they're doing, like, and I, no, they're not engineers, but I, I realize they're not engineers.
Yeah.
Anybody can drive down our roads and like, get a pretty good analysis of like, man, this road is messed up.
Yeah, but the-
And, and, I'm, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, you're fine.
You know, so one option, I mean, you know, kind of a new council, something to kinda get the community involved. We could set up a workshop, and we could drop, get in the van with all of council and drive around, and y'all could pick which roads are the worst ones. No, I'm serious, I mean, that, that could be an option.
That's actually a brilliant idea, honestly, Dalton.
If it's, if it's easy as Sharpie and a highlighter, then let's do it, and y'all can, as we're doing it, decide which roads we wanna do, and we can put them on the table, if y'all really want. I don't recommend it, but that is an option.
Honestly, you know, Dalton, I, I would- Honestly, you know, Dalton, I would love for us, six, seven of us, to get into a van and drive around the roads and actually, you know, and then come back to this and maybe say. This is the roads, or, you know, we don't know what we're talking about.
Well, I think that I think for me, the point is, none of us are road engineers.
True.
None of us are paving people. 50K is not that much money to pay for an expert with their technology to have a database to work off of. It's not, oh, I think this road sucks, or I think this road is good, or it's got too big a speed bump, but.
Well, do we have enough for me?
Around 50,000 is a lot of money, but it's in the scheme of things.
It's.
Lots more to use that than to waste 200,000 on the wrong road.
Yeah, are we at?
Yeah, I mean, at 200, what, 230 at the minimum, I think. Because I think that the other guys were giving higher numbers. I mean, 50K is kind of small jumps when we're doing, what, 40, Dalton, 45 miles, 43 miles, whatever it is.
Does it make sense?
It wouldn't really be a mistake, though, because it wouldn't be a mistake, because the road would at least be fixed.
Well, yeah, but what if it's not, but if you date anything.
I would rather have a solid database to work off of than an objective, to me, is better than subjective. That's all.
It makes sense to the.
We don't have a microphone for you.
Are we to the point in this conversation that we are ready, or do we need a little more discussion on, do we, we want to move forward on roads?
Yes.
Everyone wants to move forward on road. It is going to be a lot of money. We're going to be at roads the rest of our lives. Does it make sense now? Are we at that point in the conversation where we say, let's vote? Do we want a study? Do we want to try to do it in-house?
I think we're almost there.
Okay, I'm okay.
I would like to make one more, one more point. When I was thinking about this, if we, I have a lot of confidence. Confidence in the road construction companies because of my background. I feel like they are going to do us a quality job as good as RAS. So my thing is not so much I'm opposed to RAS as if we did go forward, we could start paving roads in a few months, rather than having to have the survey first and then start later. I mean, we've been, I know that, I don't want to use the term, but it's been delayed a lot, and so I feel like we could expedite the process more. And one thing I'm just going to throw out there is just something I've been thinking about. We have $3 million, $3 million as extra money right now, and that's reserve, it's in reserve. So the city has done a good job at managing money. And so I would suggest that for our next budget coming in August, possibly, we could say, hey, we don't need that much money in reserve. Maybe we need, I don't know, 2 million or a million and a half, and let's take the rest of that and put it toward the roads. And then make a plan so that every year, a certain amount of money goes toward those roads, so we could just get in a plan and start fixing.
That's what they said they will do.
Right.
They will give us that, here's the list of the roads, here's the condition, and here's a way you can go about systematically taking care of that, including. Patching or fixing what you got, and then how to put up a maintenance plan so that in five-year increments or whatever increments you want, then you'll have a plan to go forward, and we don't have to. The next group of guys don't have to sit around and yak about this.
I'm concerned that we, as a group, need to give Dalton a marching plans. As to what we want. So if one of us, if if we say we want two bids, and we want RAS to be one of them, and then we want Roxanne's proposal. Of another company in Roxanne, maybe you can give Dalton a couple of names of a couple of companies, or we can go to COG and get a couple of names, but. We want two bids anyway, so we've got one. Is our marching orders to Dalton to say, you want three bids? Okay. I mean, I'm not going to argue with that.
Now, are you talking about for maintenance, or are you just talking about for a study?
I'm talking about to give us a starting point so that we are intelligently moving forward on road repair and maintenance.
Really need to have, if you're going to do that, don't they all need to be bidding on the same thing? I mean.
So.
Sounds logical.
So from the.
Well, they should be. They're bidding on our roads.
Somebody doing a complete renovation, somebody doing repair, or some of them is doing patchwork.
That's not what I meant. I'm sorry. I must have misspoke.
No, so I I think I you were saying, so on separating the thing, so from the the study side, that's one component. Because then it could go out for bid or RFP or whatever to figure out the maintenance or the direction. Councilmember Stryker's side is a completely different ballgame. We don't go directly to vendors, because, well, of course, they all want your business, and we still have to RFP it, because the cost is going to be over a certain amount. So the like IDIQ stuff, which doesn't really apply to roads, as Kevin kind of, you know, alluded to, it's mostly handyman stuff, electric plumbing, whatever. So we could, we could go the direction of the vendors and just post RFPs. We just need to scope in which roads that we want to do. So it goes back to, we just need to know which roads we can start with, and then we can go in and say, okay, we're going to either RFQ it or RFP it to those roads specifically. Now, throwing this out there, you could do both if y'all really wanted, you know, the study, if RAS, KPA, it doesn't matter. All the studies are relatively the same. It's just the cup of tea that you guys want. One, you know, that study, once it gets complete, ideally, it would go into kind of the CIP, you know, CIP planning is, I think, tentative for October. In the interim, we could do an RFP, but again, you're still looking at two or three months out, because we need to know which roads to do it, then we need to have the engineers at least do a scope. And then from the scope, we could bring it to council. Council says yes. Once council says yes, then we RFP it, RFP.
I just want to stay focused on our next step.
No, so I just wanted to separate the two that.
Without going into budgeting and all that. Okay.
So I wanted to separate, we don't go straight to vendors on this, because it has to be RFPed. It can't just, we can't just go say, Lone Star, we want you. We just, we can't do that.
Oh, they will not give us a proposal is what you're saying.
They 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 will, but by procurement laws, we can't take it.
Got it. Okay. So I would like to open it up for, we need to give Dalton direction.
Well, if I can, Dorothy, before we do that, since it's on the agenda, and I asked to put it on there for RAS, because I think yours is going to fall under I. Yeah, if RAS doesn't. No, we're kind of doing H and I together. I'm still on RAS. So just just to get it on the record, so after the discussion, I would like to motion to approve RAS for the study.
Motion made.
I will second that.
Second, mate. We've had a discussion, so we'll put it up for both. All in favor, we're having RAS do the study?
Aye.
Or oppose?
Hi, me?
No.
Motion fails.
We need to give Dalton guidance as to what to do next. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We needed to.
To I.
You know, the whole time we're sitting here, I I am like, just, I have a heavy weight on my heart about, and so I want to amend an emotion. On a disc golf course, because I cannot, I don't even want to table it. I I'm not going to do that to the citizens that live over there. I I I'm not going to put a disc golf course in the citizens backyard. I'm just not going to do it. So that's where I stand.
What is what is the proper way to go back to visit that?
It was tabled, though.
Oh.
Right.
The disc golf course was.
This golf course was tabled.
Oh, okay.
It was tabled, and now I want to amend that.
I wasn't sure what to say.
Tabled. I I want I want to just absolutely.
I can amend my own motion, and.
Who made the motion?
Right.
Mayor would have to open it back up. Just going to open it for discussion again, and then. Okay.
Okay, I do not want your heart to be heavy. I think we're on the same page.
Right.
I think I didn't say it right. Okay, my, what I'd like to say, and somebody help me, is that on the disc golf. I would like to get to Parks and Rec Committee and have that be considered, that proposal be considered under everything, under Parks and Rec. And I'm also not recommending a fifth park be developed. So how do I say that? I will make a motion that. I'm amending my motion to. How do you want to say it, Stephen? Just to.
That motion's already been voted on.
I'm sorry, people.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me a second, but we are on, we're not on that right now. We are on roads right now. That is, motion's been made. It's open.
And the motion was voted on roads.
But it's open. It's open. We need to need to either close it, and then we can go back.
Okay.
But right now, we're on a different, we're not on disc golf. So there's been a motion made. Is that correct? And we voted, and we did turn it, is it turned down? Is that is that correct?
Correct, yes. It's defeated three to two on accepting RAS as the sole source of a road study.
And then the next thing is, you were talking about getting.
All.
Bid, so that, let me just get this out of the way, because that's that's the I part of the.
Okay.
H, okay? So whatever, you were wanting to give.
Well, Roxanne, maybe you'll state it better than me. I'm sorry.
You were wanting to give Dalton direction as to where to go, and that's where that's where we're at. Let's get that resolved.
Yes.
Then we'll go back. If you want to go back to disc golf, we'll do that. But let's get that off the table. So give them direction.
Okay, well, I sent, I sent a note, well, I've talked to Dalton about this a lot. I talked about this a little bit in the workshop, that I had sent a note. Asking for more information, and he said that he can't give it to me, because the governing governing body did not request this, and we serve the governing body, not one member. So that's what I want to end up with.
What do we got?
That's what I'm saying. So I.
Go back to happen, to give them direction now. What do we need?
That's what, okay, so I asked for an updated copy of the KPA engineering proposal, so that we would have an RAS, and we would have a KPA. And KPA works in the region. They know us. They know our city. I don't know if RAS has ever been to us before the sales pitch. Then the next thing I asked for was to get our city engineer to take a look at both of the bids. And give the council recommendation as to, he knows our city. RAS really doesn't know our city. Our city engineer should be able to give us a professional opinion as to what would work for Morgan's Point. Those are probably the two things.
Okay, okay, does council agree with that? I mean, is that unanimous? Y'all agree with that?
Unless Stephen wants a third bid.
So that being said, since KP or since RAS failed, do y'all want RAS to come back as a bid, or do y'all want something completely different? To complicate things?
Yes.
I would like to have RAS as a bid.
Okay.
Yes.
My own personal opinion. We're there. We've all seen a workshop. We've all seen sample reports, and we have a proposal. I don't want to reinvent that wheel.
So a formal proposal from KPA, the proposal from RAS, and then the city engineers, basically recommendations or opinions on both of those two proposals.
From a, from. Is that correct? Is that right?
From an engineering viewpoint, which one makes the most sense?
For our city.
For our city, engineering wise.
I guess the other part of the discussion was, do we need that kind of assessment, or can we do it ourself? That was.
Oh, yeah, that could be a third option.
That would be the.
Yeah, that might give you your third option, try to do it in-house.
And honestly, I'm being dead serious. I love Dalton's idea of us driving around on the roads and just as a group.
I'll do it.
You know, I don't know how we would do that, because we would have a quorum essentially, and so there. We could do a, we could do a workshop or like a tour or something.
Yeah.
So as far as the proposals and the bids, yes, as far as kind of what y'all want to do, I would, I would set kind of clear guidelines for what y'all want to do as far as council choosing those roads or doing it in-house, or how y'all want to do that. Because really, from our standpoint, even if I send maintenance out there, even if I send my twin boys out there and say, yep, this road's bad, council still needs to choose which roads we're going to do first, and I think that's the that's the core of it, so.
We have to do that tour anyway, really. Yeah, okay.
So.
So the third option is really separate from the other two proposals.
It is. It is. It's totally separate.
I like that.
So if we if we would decide to say, let's just go forward, and we're going to figure out some of the, we think are the worst roads and get them fixed, and we're going to get at this in, you know, the next few months. Then I would, I'm just making as a discussion a consideration, it doesn't totally block RAS and KPA off the table. Because if we find out, you know what, this wasn't really working, we thought we could do it, and we can't, we could always bring it back. So having said that, I would like to move that we, as council, move forward and decide which roads to start on. By doing our survey, working with the maintenance and with the city manager.
So I think those are three options.
If there's a second on that.
I'll second it.
Dalton, you got everything that you got that they want?
Yeah, so I mean, we'll.
Can you summarize it for us real quick?
Yep, so KPA, RAS, city engineer for recommendation. Official proposals. Third option, we will start, after this meeting, we will start sending out dates and times that work best for everybody to, well, might as well just turn it into a full tour of the city, so we can just do it all at once. And then we'll drive the 45 miles of road, and y'all can kind of pick and choose which one y'all want.
Before it gets too hot.
Oh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give each, we're gonna get, we're gonna get road marking cans. Oh, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna have fun with this.
Yeah, I think we should have maps with five different colors.
Both have been made, and second it, and all in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay. Dennis, I'm a nay, since I support RAS.
I'm sorry.
I said, I'm a nay, since I'm an RAS guy.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Just seems to make sense.
Well, I mean, I'm a, Neil just said, we have a streets department, and you know what? We do have a streets department, and I think that's, our maintenance department is, they're top-notch, and I know they're not engineers, but I know that they are good. I know that they can make things happen, and I trust their recommendations. I trust that Dalton trusts them.
I don't trust them on roads.
Where's BJ?
I trust them on a lot of stuff, but I'm I'm not going to put that burden on them, no. Yes, for the patchwork and for everything that they do, and I'll be honest, the cutout work that they've done and the hot mixing stuff. But the the challenge of it is, from the, you know, from that side, is it's just challenging, and Councilmember Cloon had brought it up. You know, the difference between maintenance and full-on, there's just a lot to it, and while it's. While you can go and say a road is bad, how we kind of go, that's that's just where it gets challenging.
So last week, when Bell County was here doing the roads. I guess, the main Morgan's Point Boulevard.
Yes.
23, it's 23.
Oh, you have Morgan's Point Road and then 2483. Well, 2483 is texted.
So, but they were working on that, basically, that whole length, and and so that, and again, I'm all new to this. In my mind, I'm like, why can't we work with Bell County to either get asphalt, like. I just feel like there's a way, and again, I don't know.
No, you're you're absolutely right.
There's a way to to make this a cost-effective way.
No, you're right, and and honestly, we've we've done work previously with Bell County, and we could potentially do that. What roads? That's it. That's really kind of the core of it is.
We can, we can beat this to death, but the whole point is, you have, you have to have a starting point, and the starting point in, for me, is R, an RAS-type ITech.
We voted on that.
Yeah.
We're moving forward now. It'll be an option we consider.
Trying to figure it out.
Yeah.
So that we're.
There's already been made in pass already, so we need to move on.
Motion to close discussion.
Next one on it, do you want to, well, you want to bring back up, you want to bring back up the disc golf? You would, y'all, you would mention, you want to bring it back up? Now's the time to do it.
Well, I'd like to amend that motion, but I guess.
Okay, if I can amend it, I'll be glad to amend it if I can speak the way I'm supposed to speak, but.
Kill it.
I don't want to go through the whole discussion again. I'd like to amend the motion if I can. I've read somewhere, or the person that made the motion can amend it. Oh.
I've just voted on no.
Now it has to be killed.
Is there some way we could just make a point of interest or something that we could say?
I mean, we're.
Wanted to be noted that I am opposed to a disc golf course.
You can make that in, voted against it, could have voted against it.
But we tabled it. We didn't vote against it. We tabled it. So.
Well, there's nothing, we didn't approve it, and so we.
But if we create a Parks and Rec Committee, practically speaking, we can decide their priorities.
I know.
And if disc golf comes up, you know, for the Marina, then we can address it at that time and decide at that time. Is that good enough?
I had so many people contact me like you, and then, you know. I I don't want it at Oakmont either. Like, you know what I mean? Like, we have it at Ansley Park. I, I don't want it at Oakmont either. Like, you know what I mean? Like, we have it at Ansley Park, so I think that's.
We're going to move on here. We're going to, the next option, next, uh, discussion is, uh, consider adopting a garbage enclosure. Ordinance twenty-twenty-three point two. We had talked about that in, in the workshop, so I know there's some discussion on that. Enclosure on the commercial garbage.
Um, so this, this is a planning and zoning thing, so this is a great example of some of the stuff that's going to be from the Planning and Zoning Committee that really spearheads and drives everything. I'm actually going to kind of kick this to council member Stryker on this, because she was a Planning and Zoning member. And I think she can kind of better, you know, provide better perspective and speak on that a little bit more, on kind of the direction why Planning and Zoning wanted to do it. You know, we, we as ex officio on that, we really support the planning and zoning. It's similar to the Parks and Rec Committee. This is kind of what it would be doing. They would tackle projects or tackle things outside of the council's purview, make recommendations, you know, decide what they want to do, bring experts, however they do it. Um, and then they bring it to a recommendation to council. So that's kind of where this one started, and I'm going to kick it to you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, because I was, I was very involved in this, and I can't, I had all notes written down. I can't find my notes right now, so I'll see if I can go from memory. So I was, I was on the Planning and Zoning Committee that decided we should have enclosures around our city, um, garbage, you know, can, the commercial garbage cans. So I went out and looked at every single garbage can, and we only have about ten, I think. And, um, of that, uh, probably four or five of them are in a back alley somewhere. And they are all, all except for backyard barbecue, they were all neatly maintained, and they're green and they blend in with the city. And then I went and looked at, um, we were driving around home from Temple, and Temple has all their garbage enclosures are out, setting out in the front. And then I took a, a measurement of the enclosure that is built out of brick at the, the strip mall, and that enclosure is only nine by seven, and this ordinance is requesting everybody have a twelve by twelve. And I don't, I don't know for sure, um, what the cost of this would be, but I did talk to someone who just recently had to repair, just some minor repairs. I guess my time is up, but it was, it was over, um, like, it, it, it's, it's easy up in the ten thousand dollar range. And so as a, having been on that planning zoning and the, the lone descent on that, um, oh, no, it was me and one other guy. But, um, the law, I just feel like this is putting undue pressure on our, on our, um, businesses. And I, I feel, um, that it doesn't really enhance the city at all. And I know, um, I looked at, Temple doesn't have it. I don't think Bellton has enclosures around many of their garbage, you know, commercial garbage. And then I know that, um, when we lived in Waco, there were a couple of businesses there. They didn't like the looks of their trash cans, and they put hedges around it. And it, it was a real easy way to make it look good. And we do have one, I mean, we've looked through all the garbage, commercial garbage, um, trash cans. I also called Waste Management. A Waste Management had no requirements, except for that they could get to the garbage cans. So I, I don't think it's, I feel like we're just putting undue ordinances on our business that we don't need to. So my opinion is, um, I would vote no on this.
Let's bring it up, let's bring it up to a vote. Uh, let's do this, then we'll talk about it. Uh, order twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three point one-two. I hear, uh, they would accept that, uh.
What about further discussion?
Pardon?
What about further discussion? Before voting, can we discuss?
No, we're not voting yet. I'm just bringing it up to serve for our vote. So, uh, I hear, somebody accept that?
I'd like to discuss it. I'll make a motion that we discuss this.
In a second?
Yes.
Second, okay, now, now discuss it, now.
All right. What are we trying to fix, is the question? Is, is it?
The, the question is, the commercial garbage cans are on-site, and so we want to have an enclosure around them that you can't see. That was.
Yeah, why don't we just ask them to get their cans cleaned up? I mean, there's only six or eight of them, so, you know, I think everybody would go along with it without having to put it. If it's not a huge problem, and it is a burden, I mean, you know, just trying to get everything fixed.
So, possible solutions, because this is cra, like, if you read the requirements for this, this is crazy, like, four feet deep. Have you guys tried to dig a hole in Morgan's Point? Uh, like, that's, that's an expensive hole that you just dug.
Yes.
So, I, I'm not opposed to beautifying the trash cans. I'm opposed to the way that this is written out. Um, City of Temple did something sort of interesting, where they went to the high school, and they had students go in and paint the trash cans for downtown Temple. And some of those trash cans are beautiful. I saw two of them today when I was downtown, and I was like, man, that's really cool. I know that we are trying to make this community more artistic. We've written a grant with the NEA. And like, so that, I mean, there's talented artists that live in Morgan's Point that people don't even realize. That could be something that we could do. I mean, there's a bunch of different things, but this is not it.
I, I think Temple has in-house trash service. I don't think Waste Management would like us to paint their dumpsters, but we could look, we could ask them for sure. Um, but, but really, this was, this was a planning and zoning-led, you know, thing. Typically, you know, there'll be some staff-led stuff, so like, for example, I don't want to dive too far into this, but there'll be some things we say, okay, let's review it. Is this what we want to keep doing or not? Uh, this was a PNC-led. One of the things that kind of, actually in the middle of this project that, or this discussion that happened o, over at one of the local businesses, they had some stuff that got blown down or torn down. They actually had an enclosure, you know, that got kind of wrecked. So this actually kind of goes against the closure argument, but it kind of led to consistency, right? Where some of the businesses were so large, we couldn't even find who to give the ordinance to. They kept getting kicked back. So it almost got to a point to where we were working with a local business owner, but they're not really the business owner, because they have corporate and some other stuff. So it actually took a lar, a long time, and fortunately, we didn't have to get legal involved in it, but it did drag out way longer than it needed. Not to say that that's a justification for it, but just another perspective of some of the discussions that happened at Planning and Zoning.
So we have a, a motion in a second. There's been a discussion. Do y'all want to vote on it?
What's the motion?
I just said it as a discussion. I said, I.
Right.
Okay, so I will make a motion to reject twenty-twenty, uh, point twelve, requesting that enclosures.
I'll second.
Take it now on that one?
Yes.
Stephen did.
Stephen did.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that one, that one passes as it was revamped.
On.
Oh, no, no, it did not pass. Oh, sorry, failed. Failed.
The motion was to not let them do it, so we, how do you, uh, uh, they, y'all passed it that way?
It's rejected.
Yeah, the resolution is just rejected, which means that it's moot point.
I thought you said you do, were against it.
I'm against it, and there, so if I was for it, it would have passed, but because I'm against it.
Well, you made the motion that you were against it, so you made the motion that way. You made the motion that way.
The motion passed that.
Passed as you.
You rejected.
Okay, thank you.
There's no double, double negatives in there.
There's a double negative, well, it wasn't a double negative, but it turned, it could have been turned out that way. Okay, next one is, uh, Establishing Parks and Recreation Committee.
I'm open for discussion.
Second. All right. Great idea. We need to have a way to talk about it. There, being the new guy and having someone who is very interested in parks, found this out there, which is a great, I, you know, like, I don't read all the stuff, but this is really good. And it talks about the parks, and it talks about what they have, I mean, somebody, we, we paid, as a city, we paid probably a lot of money for this thing, and, uh.
Yeah, that's been five years ago, Donna?
If you read it.
Five or six.
It's good.
It's kind of pie in the sky, though.
Yeah.
So, and this really goes along with the whole disc golf and, and whatever else we want to do, uh, the butterflies.
And, and I would think that would be a great opening thing for the Parks and Rec Committee to address, is either update that study or get a new master plan for our parks. I think that's a great way for them to start.
I think this is, you know, unless something drastic fell off the face of the earth, this thing is, this is good for twenty years and just keep it updated. But I mean, it, it, it gives the Parks and Recreation a way to do it. The, and just from a personal note, we did all of this, Donna, what was the lady's name that, that, Mary Anderson? Was it Mary Anderson? We had a Parks and Recreation meeting, uh, you know, a group. The only problem that we had was the city didn't pay any damn attention to us. Well, it wasn't necessarily money, it was, I think that there was like, okay, you, you guys said all that, but we don't care, because we're going to do this.
So would we like to have Dalton come up with the criteria for a Parks and Wildlife, a Parks and Wildlife?
Mr. Mayor, you stole my line. I agree, it's a great idea. Dalton, on behalf of the rest of the council, I challenge you, charter you for the next council meeting, to have a Parks and Recreation Committee outline drawn up for us for a vote. Please, sir.
Number of people you want on it, and just basically criteria, so we know.
Yep, just give us an outline, what it's going to look like.
Correct. They don't have to be. We can be, we can be in charge of our parks. I think we can work with EDC on that, for sure.
Okay, moving on, next one.
Okay, so.
So did we first and second and vote?
I thought we, I thought we just, I thought we just said. Do we vote on it?
Well, let's do it again to be sure.
Make a motion that we set up a Parks and Recreation Committee and that Dalton will let, put out the, a broad outline of what we will decide to fill in the blanks.
For next month.
For next month.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll second it.
I made the first motion, actually.
I thought you both seconded it, I'm sorry, I'm for.
Said the same thing, but.
It's not getting later or anything.
Got a lot here.
Well, there's a hundred.
All in favor of it? Any opposed? Okay, Dalton, you may need to upgrade us on this Sherwood deal. Did we approve this thing a couple of years ago, did we not, on this closing of the?
It's approved.
Three.
Um, yeah, hopefully this will be the easiest one of the night. So, uh, this Sherwood, we've been calling it kind of the Sherwood Project that started in nineteen ninety-nine. Um, time passed, uh, the resident here, so Sherwood Drive goes all the way through, where on the Platte and Bell County, it was a cul-de-sac. So basically, there was some land that the city right of way was through private property, and then there was some city-owned right-of-way that really was just kind of in la-la land. Um, this particular one, so there's the east and west side. We're not focusing on the west side. Uh, we're going to have to come back to that at a later date. This only focuses on the east side with Mr. and Mrs. Valdez's properties, since they are abutted directly to each other. Long story less long, um, the project came back to the table in two thousand eighteen. The resolution was done by council. Everything was pretty much set to go, and then it, it kind of just fell off by the wayside. Uh, Mr. and Mrs. Valdez came.
Does the other residence on the other side didn't want to do it?
I think it was kind of a little bit of everything, yeah. Yeah, it's kind of a little bit of everything. Yeah, it's something like that, and so we were like, you know what, let's just focus on the east side, so they could build their property, since they haven't been able to build a home for, since two thousand eighteen, uh, when they started looking at this. Um, got the surveys, got everything done, and here we are. So this ordinance is basically the final ordinance, uh, that says the city is going to abandon the cul-de-sac portion of the road and convey it to the Valdez's, only on the east side. And then they've already signed the deed that says they're going to basically deed the portion that is where Sherwood Drive is over to the city for right-of-way.
There a motion to accept that?
I move to accept the abandonment of the Sherwood Drive cul-de-sac.
I'll second it.
Though, are we voting on the resolution? Because.
The ordinance.
The ordinance, okay. The ordinance has a typo in it, so before we vote yes.
That's had to my, on acreage, yeah.
Yeah, so I've given it to, um, Ophelia and Dalton already, so the, we need to amend the ordinance to have the correct acreage? Okay, so do we approve an amended one, or do we approve this one?
I'll call it a friendly amendment. I agree with your amendment.
Okay, so the ordinance says point three five acres, which is about a third of an acre, and it's point zero three five acres. Yeah, okay, so, uh, I would make a motion to accept the ordinance as amended. Okay.
Any further discussion on that, anybody? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next item on our, item M, discussing, consider approving drought contingency plan under the utility chapter thirteen.
Um, yeah, so this one came back, came in May. We brought it back. We made a lot of the changes that were kind of recommended. We did not touch the fees portion of it, because we're going to have to do public hearing and go through that whole shebang. We wanted to at least have the updated one in place, because in one of the project updates, they are going to have to drain one of the towers. And so we just want to make sure that we have the up-to-date drought contingency. This is not one that you approve, and then two years later, you do it again. We can always bring this back and talk about, you know, stuff later. So we can always amend it as we need to.
I move we discuss this.
Okay, I'll second.
I, I, um, I really liked the clarifications that were made in the, in the, um, updated version of this that they put out, including things like, even if the fees are not exactly the same, it does say additional fees. So you make sure you know that you're not just paying that and nothing else. This is in on top of what you've done if you don't follow these water restrictions that are outlined in these different stages. So I am happy with this, and will be happy to propose we accept it.
Hey, I think, Dorothy, didn't you second?
I'll second it.
Second it. Any further discussion on it?
Okay, let me clarify what I, I'm in, I'm making a motion to accept article thirteen point oh-five drought contingency plan as brought to us by council with the updates.
With the contingency that the rates, uh, will be reevaluated at a later date.
As needed, yeah.
Right? That's what you wanted to do? Okay.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes there. Okay, discussion, consider resolution twenty-twenty-three point one-zero approval grant funding and, and local, with, uh, local match for upgrade on body armor. Matt, it's your turn, finally. I see you brought, brought it, brought it with you.
Thank you.
Three minutes, I can do any one.
All right.
So let me, let me clarify some of the, uh, the wording here. Hey, Esther, can you turn me down a little bit? Uh, so let me clarify some of the wording on this. This is not a grant to, um, upgrade body armor inserts. So, um, I have over here two of my bulletproof vests that our officers wear. Um, actually, one is a bulletproof vest, the other is rifle-plated armor. So, um, the first, uh, about this, this ordinance or this resolution is to upgrade our current body armor that the officers wear every day, all day while they're on duty. Uh, so it's not inserts or anything. It's basically taking the armor that we wear every day, upgrading it to, uh, buying everybody new vest, um, and then adding side protection, where we don't have side protection currently. Um, so every now and again, you, you may get an officer that may gain a little weight, you know, may lose a little weight. Um, and so, um, they may get a little gap there, which is not good for body armor, not safe. Um, so this would take into account weight loss, weight gain, um, and add a little more side protection there as well, whereas we don't have any currently. Um, so that's what this resolution is for. It's not for any inserts or anything like that. It's basically taking, um, and there is a grant out there for that. So it's called the Patrick Leahy Body Armor or Bulletproof Vest Partnership Program, but it's a fifty-fifty match. So we would need to take in, you know, fifty percent of our funds, we need to kick in fifty percent. Um, so what we're doing is asking for a replacement of all of our bulletproof vests for everybody, um, on the department. Um, and basically, that comes out to about the same amount we would actually budget for this going into this next year to replace vests. So for the same money we were going in every year, we can replace all of them. So.
Basically, this, this resolution is for the upgrade of the vest, not depending on the grant. There's nothing to do with the grant, right?
Yes, it would, it would have to do with the grant. It's, uh, basically.
It's contingent upon the grant.
Yes, it's approval of the grant, but I'll tell you, from what I have heard, um, basically, you apply for the grant, um, and unless you're, and of course, there are contingencies for the grant, so, um, we qualify, but a smaller city, uh, but as long as you qualify for the grant. But as long as you qualify for the grant, I've been told, you won't get denied for it.
Motion.
Just a point of clarification. Which resolution? Are we talking about 2023-10 or 2023-13?
10.
10, okay.
And also to, just, you know, kind of clarifying what Chief had said. So body armor is one of those things that every department has maintenance plans on. So we budget the same amount every year for replacement of body armor. So that way, it's not just these ebbs and flows of, of budget expenses. So if they do get the grant, then we basically spend the body armor money that we would normally get, and they replace it all, and then a maintenance plan would come in. If they don't get it, we just stay on the same maintenance plan that we already have.
Okay, so to clarify, Roxanne, so the way that the agenda is written, flip those around. So where it says M, where it says discussing, I'm sorry, N, discuss and consider resolution 2023 dash, or point 10, approving grant funding with local match, that is actually backwards. There is no match for that one. So that is the other grant that we basically applied for that says.
Basically, we're approving it just as is.
Yes, as is. So that, that basically grant by the second vest over there, which is the rifle-resistant plates that the officers will throw on over their bulletproof vest to give them protection against high, high-velocity rifle rounds in the case of active shooter events. So that's what that is. That required no matching funds from the city. That was a grant completely 100% funded by the DOJ.
Dalton, is that money already in, in a budget? I mean, do we have, so do we even need to approve it?
Motion to close discussion.
Well, I just want to thank Matt because you are awesome on getting grant money.
Yes, sir.
And I really appreciate it. Okay.
I'd like to, a motion to accept 2310 and 23, 2313 as well. I don't think that.
I'll second.
Yeah.
Okay.
You want to combine them?
Let's do one, 2310.
Well, we'll start with, since it's out of order, we'll go 20, 23.13 to approve.
Yeah, they're just, they're just, the description on them, on the agenda is backwards. Yeah, so, yeah, 10 required no matching funds, and that was the rifle plates back there, and 13 requires a 50-match, and that's replacing the actual bulletproof vest they wear every day. It's about $4,000 and some change, so about $4,300 or something like that, off the top of my head. And so that's about what we budget every year to replace body armor, and that's only for three. So in this case, we're getting 10 for three.
And it says that in the memo, but it doesn't say it in the resolution. And I would really like to always have the amount that we're approving in the resolution from now on, please. I think it just clarifies everything. So I'd like, you know, we can approve it, but I'd like to put the money in.
Well, the, the second one does give the amount.
It doesn't say it in the
Resolution.
Resolution. It says it in the memo.
It even said we're going to combine them, so it will be, you want to combine the resolutions, right?
Well, we're just, they're out of order, and so we're just, I'm killing two birds with one stone. If you'd like to, to do it in the order.
I would like to second the motion to accept resolution 2023.10 and resolution 2023.13.
Including amounts of money. I'll second.
Okay, okay. Any further discussion? All in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I tried to make it shorter.
Thank you, Matt.
Okay, then we're getting into, you want to show them the vest?
We did, we did both of them.
We did both of them.
Yeah, we just did them.
Keep on trucking, guys. Let's go.
Let's go, let's go. I'm going to have to go to the bathroom in a minute.
We're adopting the NPR Marineport Resort Employee General Administrative Safety Policy we had talked about in the workshop.
Public Works or Utilities, they hate when I call them Public Works, but Jerry is going to do a presentation. You going to talk about it?
Can I say while you're walking up, I know this takes a ton of work. I have written policies like this before, and you must be awesome. You've got great skills.
Well, I appreciate it.
Yeah, it's great.
I didn't really come with the presentation. My name's Jerry, by the word, my name's Jerry, by the way. I'm a utilities operator in our water department. My background, I was a health and safety coordinator for a general contractor. Kevin here earlier did a lot of projects with him on Fort Hood. So I, I have a background in safety. This was kind of landed on me. Jesse and Dalton had, had a meeting probably three years ago with TML, and it's kind of been tabled since then. With my experience, Jesse thought, you know, I got you in here, let's get something going. So I, I put together this, this program. It's, it's not a full-blown, if, if you notice, it's, it's just the key elements I included were administrative policies and procedures. I've been with the city now for, for seven months, coming in as a new employee. I can tell you, there's, there's not really any orientation for, for new employees. It's just learn as you go. So I, I'm just going to open it up to y'all. If y'all have any questions, comments, concerns that I can answer, let me know.
I, I was curious, because this is like a brand-new ordinance, correct? So I was curious, what do we have in place now? Do we have anything at all?
Okay, so when this landed on, in front of me, I looked, I was like, all right, what do we got, guys? And there's, there's two sentences in Appendix A of, I think it was Section 11.01, in, in our ordinances, and it was two sentences long. It stated, "The policy of the city is to make every effort to provide a healthful and safe working condition for all its employees. The city will take all steps necessary to provide safety training." That was it. So.
And to add on to that, you know, even before Jerry had come on board, Jesse and them, and the directors know, that was one of the first questions that I asked, because we came from some very unsafe practices in, you know, other places. So safety was the very first thing that we had kind of brought up and said, what do we have in place? As we kind of started watching things unfold, our directors, and again, this is not really blowing smoke, they've done a wonderful job at maintaining best safety practices. So this, this, what, what I love about this program, one, we've worked with TML Risk Pool on this, and TML Risk has come out to help us kind of build this program. We've taken best practices. But more importantly, what I love about it is there, all that this is doing is putting on paper what we have already been doing, and puts a process and a procedure to that. This is just the administrative portions of it. There's about another, what, 200 pages of stuff on there? So eventually, this will be something that'll, you know, not just a, hey, this looks cool, and, you know, we're going to put it on there and then throw, throw it away. No. This will kind of lead into the committee side. This will lead into, you know, safe, you know, best practices, policies for very specific things, backhoes, whatever. So this was just foundational, and it's something that they've already been doing for the past two and a half years. It's just finally coming to fruition. So thank you, Jerry.
Has this been bounced off the department heads?
Yeah.
As, as long as they've seen it or uncomfortable with it, then I make a motion to accept it.
Yeah, that was the gist of some of my comments, too, that I talked about in the workshop. And that is, this is requiring monthly safety meetings, weekly and monthly documented inspections of all facilities every month. All department heads need to have these meetings. And you're putting a lot on the department heads, so I just wanted to make sure the department heads have read this, and that they are on board with doing this, and that they're not going to come to us during budgeting time and ask us for an administrative assistant to keep track of all this documentation, and also, how do we ensure compliance? I'm all for it. I love it. I'm huge on safety. I just want to make sure it's practical for a city our size. With the departments we have, we don't give them a lot of administrative support. And I don't want to create something that is going to put a burden on them.
Dalton, you said we're already doing all this. It's just put in writing now.
Yeah, I mean, really, really, I mean, kind of from the standpoint of the department side, you know, there's, we always have input from the directors on everything we do. We have director meetings typically every month. You know, and then, of course, we're always in contact with the directors. So this is kind of one of those things that is a top-down driven, bottom-up, you know, kind of supported process. They've come to us on the safety side, and they valued that. And so now this is kind of the top-down saying, hey, we are in support of it, we need to do something. Because the alternative is, well, we don't have anything to have compliance on, and it's not if, it's when something happens, not at any fault of our directors, but at what cost are we willing to say that that's going to happen?
Well, and that was one of my questions, is if legal has looked over it, because ultimately, this is a CMA thing, you know? And, and so like, has legal looked over it and said, hey, this is going to be good if someone came back and tried to sue us because they got hurt on the job, and?
Yeah, and, and really, again, once, once this kind of gets put into play, this is a continuous thing. So if we come into it and we're like, yeah, maybe we need to tweak some of this, we can always bring bits and pieces, you know, back and say, hey, we, we looked at this, or legal assessed this, or, hey, risk management change, or compliance change, the laws change. So this is a continuous, you know, fluid.
A living documented.
Yes, and, and TML Risk Pool is kind of the leading, I mean, there are insurers.
Yeah.
And if they're the ones that are helping us build this document and build this stuff, and they're the ones that says, hey, guys, this fits you and this fits y'all, that's, that's pretty good.
They're the ones that's going to pay.
They're the ones that are ultimately going to pay.
Right. And, and I worked on this with Randy Garza. He's our, our senior risk management person, and, and he stamped it, too, so.
Yeah, we just didn't get any of those approvals, or we didn't get the process in this. All we got was the policy. So it would have been nice to know, you know, that it has already gone through everything, the department heads have signed off. So Dalton already told us that he meant to put that in here, and that he will provide it for us. That, that the, that it has been cleared with the department heads, that it is not going to create new positions, it's not going to create new money, we're doing it anyway, and we just need to codify it or document what we're doing. That's what I hear loud and clear.
And I think even more simplistically, does city council want us to have a safety policy, and if they do, then task me to implement the safety policy?
Well, I want a safety policy, but if it's going to cost the city $100,000, then I want a modified safety policy.
Right now, there is no fiscal.
I hear ya, but.
I would hope that you would not approve the budget if that were the case. You got, you control the purse string, so.
Yeah, but if we're approving the policy, and what will happen at budget time is they'll say, well, we need $100,000 to implement this policy.
You don't have to approve it.
So then why have a policy if we're not going to follow it?
I just have.
I'm talking about the money. I'm talking about the administrative assistance.
We need to know the money when we're implementing new policies.
There, there is no fiscal note as of right.
It's an amendable document.
But, okay, loud and clear, okay.
I just had, on, on page nine, when it says that all safe work practice will be held monthly, when I was on a policy and procedure committee, we would soften the word a little bit, like saying should be held monthly instead of.
Good point.
Because that will be, that would give a little bit of leeway for some departments that may not need a monthly meeting.
It's a living document. It can be changed.
Well, and, and, and I think, too, and just like, you know, certain aspects of it, you know, kind of thinking about the council from a setting the policy, setting, you know, the guidelines, and then city manager implementing it, you know, there's things that we can kind of put in there that says, and again, not to change the policy, but things like that should or could or would. City, city manager, you know, can, you, you guys can set it to say the city manager at his discretion, you know, can base off safety policy. Because ultimately, if something's going on and we're starting to see a compliance issue, finger gets pointed at me, as it should. And so then we can make those changes, you know, appropriately.
And another way to do it would be a soft six-month implementation. Let's go ahead and implement it softly. In other words, it's not firm policy. It's a draft. Everybody's going to work with it. And then once after six months, then we, everybody's happy with it, and it's working. And that's another way to do it.
Well, I make a motion we accept it as it is now, and Dalton's in charge of making sure that it's up to. I'm sorry. I lost the chapter.
Yeah, motion on the floor.
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, we've talked about it now in verve. All in favor of accepting the city's policy?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, moving right along, discuss and consider adopting social media policy and update of the city personnel policy. Dalton? Oh, that's, okay, that's, Esther.
And as Esther's walking up, you know, it's the same comments I had at the workshop. You know, we're getting a, a new policy from an employee, and it doesn't have the process of how this policy was, that Dalton signed off on it, and that everybody agrees to it, and so I just want to make sure that when we get things as an oversight board, that it's already, all the, everything's already been done to make sure this makes sense operationally, practically, for everyone. Okay, sorry.
So the, we are proposing the implementation of two different policies governing the city's use of social media. Both of these policies, truly, they are just a summary of best practices and guidance by both TML and TAMEO, which is the Texas Association of Municipal Information Officers. So all of these, everything that is in these policies really are what we should already be doing. I can attest to the fact that we have not been. So one of my major tasks is cleanup and making sure that we are following best practices. So the first policy that we, we propose is a social media and commenting policy. The goal of this policy is to establish standards and guidelines for the city-affiliated social media pages. So that policy covers procedures for establishing social media pages, who is allowed admin access to those pages, how passwords are stored, et cetera. That's to make sure that we are, we have consistency across our social media pages, that they are being managed by people that we trust, and that they are in alignment with our overall communication strategy. This policy also covers social media use and best practices. That's just to make sure that we are setting the standard right from the outset, outset of how we are going to manage our pages to be in alignment with best practices. And then it also includes a commenting policy, which includes guidelines for moderation, removal of inappropriate content subject to the First Amendment rights of our residents, and then handling, handling controversial discussions and addressing user queries and questions in a timely manner. I will note, as to Councilmember Allen's questions regarding any fiscal costs that's associated, currently, the city is not archiving any of our social media pages. Everything that is posted on a city government social media page, and everything that any user comments on a city government social media page is subject to the Open Information Act, and it is subject to archiving. We currently do not archive. So with this policy, there would be a fiscal cost of 4,188 per year so that we can contract with a service that would do that archiving for us, and that would make sure that we were prepared for any public information requests. And this is to ensure that we are in compliance with those, with those state and federal laws. The second policy is a social media participation policy for city council. This is to, the, the aim of this policy is to ensure that council's social media use, usage comports with federal and state law as well as with the city's social media policies. This policy addresses the additional consideration that council members really should be taking when it comes to your use of social media as elected officials. First and foremost, this, this policy reiterates that commenting on city accounts has to adhere to the city's social media commenting policy, as well as the personnel policy when commenting on those pages. It also gives recommendations to council members on their use of personal accounts. I will say that the case law is by no means settled at this point. There are currently two cases that are headed to the Supreme Court involving a superintendent and a city manager, both of whom was, were using their personal accounts to conduct city business. And then they blocked or deleted comments on their accounts, and they are now headed to the Supreme Court because they've been sued for First Amendment violations. So this is, in our policy, we just give recommendations for best practices so that you guys can be taking care of yourselves and protecting yourself from liability. Honestly, at the end of the day, it isn't the city's liability, it is your personal liability. So even if you don't accept this policy, I highly recommend that you follow the best practices in this policy, because you're the one who will pay if you don't. Finally, there are recommendations for use of official accounts. We do highly recommend that you maintain a separate official account for engaging with constituents regarding politics or city business. There are some additional recommendations in there. We recognize that you guys are in a somewhat unique position. I have more recently found out that we are not unique in having a neighbor's page. Every city has that. And, and so we provide some additional recommendations for you guys when it comes to engaging on those pages so far as walking quorum in the comment section, and so far as discussing city business on those accounts, on those pages using your personal account. We recommend you don't do it. But if you want to have an official account, we recommend that you have an official account, and we also recommend that you keep that official account separate from your campaigning account. It's fun. Finally, we give some recommendations so far as records, records retention. The city is not responsible for records retentions on your personal social media pages. Or if you choose to have an official social media page, we are not responsible for your records retention. we are not responsible for your records retention, and we recommend that you consult either with a personal attorney to consider that option. We, as the city, and I will say, this has been run through the city manager's office and was developed in association with the city manager's office. We highly recommend that you implement these policies to ensure that we are in adherence to the law, that we protect the city's recommendation, and that we provide clear guidelines for effective social media usage as we are developing our communications and branding strategies. And I'm open to any questions.
Thank you, Esther, appreciate that.
Yeah. So this proposal is just for our official city websites?
So the first policy is a social media and commenting policy that would be in addition to the current policies that are in the personnel handbook. I will say, the current policies in the personnel handbook were pretty solid. They just need to be updated. It talks a lot about personal blogs, so it's a little bit out of date. So the first policy is in addition to our current personnel policies, and it governs both how the city is going to run the official social media pages. It does touch a little bit on how city representatives should engage with those pages and represent the city on social media, which we already have some policies about that in our personnel policies. The second is truly just for city council in general, for you guys' use of social media, both when you're engaging with the city-affiliated pages and when you are just using your personal accounts.
So I have a couple of questions, because I've had people ask me this. One person asked me, what about if the spouse of a councilperson posts something on social media, say, Neighbors of Morgan's Point, not our official one? Then they said it comes across as if the councilperson is speaking through the spouse. Is that addressed at all in here, and what would your recommendation be on that?
Spouses are not elected officials. When you elect an official, you are electing them and not their spouse. So spouses are not, spouses are not subject to this policy, especially the council policy. It defines who is, who falls under the policy, and it is acting members of council only. I can maybe give you some recommendations about the optics of that. And I'm sure you understand the optics of it, but we cannot control spouses.
So something that a citizen addressed with me, and Esther, and I don't honestly know the right, and it's about Jimbo running the Neighbors of Morgan's Point.
Jimbo has stepped down.
Not according to information that was on there, like, I don't know.
I saw that it was on there, that he stepped down.
Oh, I saw that.
Let's ask Jimbo.
Jimbo?
But then, but then, the site was taken down for like 30 days, and I had people calling me and freaking out.
I apologize to interrupt. That is not a city-affiliated page, and I can't speak to it at all. I have no answers. My understanding is, I will admit, I had a conversation with Jimbo immediately and gave him a recommendation. And my understanding is that he followed that recommendation, but other than that, I know nothing about that page, it's not ours.
So I have, I have.
But the policy that you're trying to implement is the best practices, right?
The policy that we're implementing does include recommendations to council on how they engage with community face, you know, community groups such as neighbors or next door, things like that. So we give recommendations to council members, and their adherence to those recommendations.
Fair enough. I love you, Jimbo.
I know, this is kind of off the wall, but a question was, somebody posted on Neighbors of Morgan's Point about splash pads and how we have to use recycled treated water to do them. Well, my daughter was just telling me about how their splash pad in their town got closed down because they didn't use recycled. I just wanted to make that statement, that that would be a good idea if we ever considered it. Is that something I should do as city council, or should I not? I didn't respond, because I didn't know if I could.
Our recommendation is that you, if you want to respond, respond saying, I'd love to talk more with you about this, and direct them to your official city email address.
So.
I couldn't do it as a resident.
As a resident, you are welcome to do that, but I really do discourage, because the current case law suggests that if there is even an appearance of you using that personal page to discuss city business, then you can get yourself in a world of trouble.
And there's, you know, there's a lot of scenarios and what ifs, which is kind of where the importance of this had come out. And so if there's, if there's a lot of concern and stuff, I think we could definitely workshop, you know, kind of a social media best practices stuff. This was really foundational to the social media side, it updated the personnel side, and then it kind of provided context, you know, to our many volunteers, council members. Again, just to make sure everybody's protected and safe.
Yeah, well, just let me make a couple of comments real quick, and I really appreciate it. And it makes a lot of sense, I have looked at it. But I do want to make sure that it's not shutting down any of our residents. I want to make sure residents, because I, you know, looked at this whole page 112 where, and then on page 110, it says citizens will be banned.
No.
If they're negative, if they make negative comments. And I just want to make sure that if we ban somebody, which I understand you have to ban somebody from time to time. Yeah. Yeah, how long will the person be banned, is my question?
First Amendment, you can't ban someone on a city page.
Oh, then I misread it.
Yes, the policy actually specifically states that we cannot delete comments or ban residents. We, as, as a limited.
If it says that, I misread it.
Yes, so as a limited, social media, city government's social media is more and more being considered a limited government forum, similar to city council meetings, where we can, as long as we are properly archiving content, we can have policies in place that allow us to, say, delete spam or links to sexually inappropriate websites, or things like that, that allow us to hide or delete those types of comments that are inappropriate.
As long as you're telling me that this allows citizens to comment on policies.
Yes, the goal of this is to protect First Amendment rights of our citizens and to ensure that we are not deleting anything related to city business or opinions or anything. Yeah.
Yeah, and then my only other concern, and this is probably a philosophical, we could talk all night about it, but I have a problem with just not responding to people. And it says some things that we just don't respond. I don't know why we can't have a response that just says, thank you for your comment.
That was to prepare for the possible volume as we grow our city pages. That's to prepare for the possible volume of comments that we may eventually receive. And recognizing that there is one single full-time staff member and a couple volunteers who are going to be managing these pages, we need to prepare ourselves for the fact that eventually, you know, there might be people who comment our pages, on our pages, saying, we love this. And we can't respond to every single one of those comments. But we want to make sure that we are responding to comments if there are legitimate concerns that are brought up, or if there's misinformation that needs to be corrected.
Right, I'm just looking at this chart that you did. Is it worth responding to? And I just want to make sure we err on the side of responding.
Absolutely.
Okay, okay, perfect.
And that chart that you're referring to is a, it's a guide of recommendations. So there will be training for volunteers and for staff on how we run these pages. And humans are humans, so everyone's going to be following that guide a little bit differently. And I can assure you that our ultimate goal is to make sure that we are responding to citizens and that we are increasing communication between us and residents always.
Okay, thank you for this.
A motion to close discussion.
Further discussion?
Well, do we, do we, what's the?
We approve it.
Consider, adopt, that's it. Okay, we need a motion that we will adopt this. Is that what you, your motion was?
Motion to adopt.
Okay.
Adopt the social media participation policy and the social media use and commenting policy.
Any questions, all in favor?
Aye.
You oppose? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda, discussing city establishing guidelines for agenda management and structure.
So I set aside an hour for this discussion?
No.
Do y'all, do y'all want to just table this, and we can talk about this on a later date, or?
I'd like to just make a quick comment, because I asked you about this, and I do want to make sure that city council drives our own agenda. So you gave me the copy, there's a rules of conduct for the city of shirts, where it talks about how things get on the agenda. So I guess I'd like to develop that type of protocol for our city council.
So study, like, doing like a kind of a decorum, you know, rules of conduct, so let's.
But also, agenda, procedures.
Yeah, so I'd say, let's do that on items for future agenda, or we can, you know, put a discussion or a workshop even for like a decorum type thing, which then you do all the rules of conduct and decorum and tie all that stuff into it and set that. So that would be a whole workshop, I think, for decorum stuff.
We'll move that to a workshop. Take it off the.
It's up to council.
Okay. Moving right along, so we can get through here.
We.
You'll need.
We have to do a motion, right?
What do you, I was trying to say it, I thought we were just going to push it. You want to make a motion too?
They got to do the motion to postpone.
I hear a motion too. With the alert?
I move to postpone this to the workshop.
I'm sorry, I was listening to the alert, I thought we were, I'm sorry.
Is it, Jimbo, are we okay?
Roxanne, put a motion on the table.
I'll second it.
Jimbo will.
Anyone in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I'm leaving right along. Motion passes. Gary, are you here, are you still here?
Not in line. It's a long day. Well, we could do this a couple of different ways. Obviously, new council, so some of y'all don't even possibly know what you should know about audits. But I will kind of do a high level of where we're at, after all the alerts go off. So really, right now, the last completed audit was nine, so our fiscal year ended September 30th. So the last completed audit was September 30th of 2018. So Dalton and I here got here in 2021, and we were working with a local firm, Lot Vernon, to get back and try to complete the 19 and 20 audits. So after realizing that we were kind of at a stalemate with them, depending on their staff time, they never set foot on city property to help do the audits. Some of this, it happened to be like a perfect storm. So a little bit about me, I spent like five years as an auditor. So it was postponed, I'm sorry. I usually talk with my hands. So it was pre, you know, it was a long time ago. But really, typically here, you would have interim testing, fieldwork, and then kind of final balances, but testing's kind of fieldwork. We gave them the stuff, assumed that they were doing some of the things, and they weren't. So the one little kind of glitch, and Dorothy can attest to this, hopefully, but so the only reason we got the 2018 audit done was because of a volunteer at the time, a city councilwoman currently, got us caught up. And so after she went on vacation, or whatever the story was, the 19 audit just went stale. So we were not able to, not we, city staff at the time, did not have the capability or the knowledge to get it completed. There were, the audit would not start until certain things were done, which one was just making journal entries from the prior audit. So I want to make sure I'm not neglecting where we kind of started, and then we'll kind of talk about where we're at. So just to make sure everyone's on the same page as we talk about it, and there's misinformation or anything like this. So the only reason we had the audit completed was Dorothy Allen volunteered a lot of her time. So when the 19 audit completed, she was not volunteering anymore. She left the city in a good place. So there was nothing done improperly or anything like this. We got a report issued, you know, around the general timeframe that we had been getting prior audits. There was numerous change in city staff, and the one little problem with audits is there's something called subsequent events testing. So when the audit closes, you know, our fiscal year ended in 2019, basically, any check or any disbursement of city funds, after that audit is closed, it's usually up until the very final day of fieldwork, they have to go over and examine. So as the audits got staler and staler, even when we started kind of after I got here, they were looking at three years of data to complete one audit. So after, whenever Dane came out here, and I think it was like October of last year, my phone is dead, so I, don't quote me on some of the dates or anything like this, but then it was kind of decided that this wasn't working with the current audit firm. So I think it was in January of last year, or no, January of this year, we decided to reach out to another audit firm, and they're going to come in and do a beginning balance testing for 2020, and they're going to complete the 21 and 22 audits. I think the timeline was roughly September, the end of September of this year. So we have provided them the information. Really, we were, yeah, so we, it's more for the internal controls and all that stuff. There is going to be one other thing, as we went through it, and you could speak on behalf of this, but really, the current software that we use with the situation that we're in, it's a problem. So earlier in the year, we started, and so that's where the only timeline might get kind of slightly delayed, but hopefully it'll only be a couple of weeks or a month, and they had some built-in cushion. But really, what ended up happening is, they can start all the beginning balances, and then when we, if they are going to stick with that deadline, then I will let us know if it kind of slightly gets delayed. I will make sure as soon as we know a date. But we're hoping that they're going to complete with the timeline that they originally proposed. But, so really, what the timeline was, they were going to have the 21 and 22 audits done by September, and then they would kind of take a month off, and then they would kind of go into the 23 testing. So we have provided them the confirmations. We were talking to them before I went on vacation, and they were trying to lock in their fieldwork dates, where they're going to come onsite. If we need to the next month, the auditors said that they would come up here and talk, or they're going to, as we know the fieldwork dates, we will try to make sure we kind of move it around where then they can either be up here at a city council meeting and speak. So that way, we're not trying to delay anything or like this, so y'all are going to get to see them onsite finally. So I'm going to even put it up on the billboard signs, like the auditors are here. Run away, so, but really, for here, every month, like I said, I will get up here and I'll tell us where we're at or anything like this. So hopefully, you know, we're sticking to the timeline, or if we have to move it back a couple of weeks or a month like this, that way, every month, I will discuss it, so.
So right now, it says, complete the beginning balance audit for 9/30/20, and that's to be done by June, end of this month. Are you on target to do that?
Probably not. So it will be close, and so like I said, let me get with the auditor. Yeah, and then I will, you know.
Let us know.
So really, the one other problem was, and we've talked about it, is some of those beginning balances, since they were closed down, you could not do it in the prior software. So to get some of these kind of remedied so we can get a clean start, we were trying to use that other software. So to get a better product, we were trying to do it a slightly different way. But at this point, I think, you know, I will get them to give me an updated timeline, and then I will share that with, at the next meeting. So, or if it's still the same existing timeline, I mean, obviously, it's going to be tweaked a little bit, but hopefully, at a core component, it's going to stay roughly the same. So then the only other one would be, what do we do with that original audit from 19? And so we can decide that later on, that's not a pressing concern, because really, they would have to do the same exact thing that Lot Vernon had done. But once we get through that first, you know, two audit cycle, my suggestion would be the mayor, Dalton and me, or whoever, and then the mayor pro tem, we meet with Lot Vernon, and we actually have something that we say, hey, we want to continue using Lot Vernon, and they get to do it. Or some of the testing that would need to be done, Brooks Watson will have actually kind of done it already, and there's subsequent already. So that will probably be a better option, but like I said, that would probably be best answered after we have the first two audits done. And then depending on whoever city council recommends, but like I said, I would think the mayor and the mayor pro tem, or Dorothy wants to do it, depending on whoever it is, that would kind of be my direction. So, except I will just kind of get up here on the next month, or whenever we reach out to them, or whenever they give us an updated one, I will let y'all know. Any questions for me? And?
Just keep it as a high priority for you, do not get sidetracked, do not take your little auditor hat off, and let's get them done, let's get them back on track.
Yeah, I mean, because, and I know, as y'all talked about it, obviously, yes, I put that restricted versus unrestricted cash sheet in there, but if you're trying to figure out, hey, we can use 1.2 million, or whatever the number is, that's just my accounting guess. I mean, it's not really a guess, but I mean, it would look better if y'all actually had a report in front of you that you can make those decisions on.
You did a good job, Gary, we appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. It would be, it would be a big thing to be lifted off our heads, that those audits go through. Any project update?
The only thing on the water storage tank, they're going to have to, and the reason why the drought contingency came in, they are going to have to drain one of the towers and pretty much shut that tower down by the public safety center so they can get all the pipe work connected. It doesn't mean we're shutting the water down in the city, it just means we're going to be operating the city on one tower, one ground storage tank. But again, mostly precautionary, we added a buffer in there. To ease everybody's mind on this, last year, during one of the worst droughts, we operated the entire city off of one pump. So winning, we're doing well. Legislative update, I already talked about it, HB 1434 did pass. It did go to the governor's desk, it did get signed, it is effective immediately, and then council can decide what they want to do. Oh, let me bring that.
And that's staggered terms.
And that's staggered term, yes, ma'am, thank you. Road updates, BJ and his crews, they did some patchwork on, sorry, let me pull this up, my computer died. Sherwood at Bluff, Cliffside Circle, Buckskin Loop. up, my computer died. Sherwood at Bluff, Cliffside Circle, Buckskin Loop, Golden Poppy, and then, of course, you know, every week, we try to tackle, you know, more and more projects and stuff as they come up. So one of the differences now is we'll start getting those pothole updates. You know, if we say Golden Poppy, don't think we've just done Golden Poppy, we've probably done a one-foot little pothole in there, but we're working on it. Um, so we'll start having those as well. And that's all I got, unless you want me to keep going.
Well, on the roads, and it kind of is going right into the departmental reports. I've requested, and I would like to see, a monthly maintenance department report included in our packet that addresses the road repairs that have been done, the road repairs that are still outstanding, and whatever else you think you want from the maintenance department, we'll take that report. Now, do we have to vote on that to get maintenance to give us a monthly departmental report in our packet?
No, but from the last, and so this is why I put it in the city manager update, is because y'all made it a standing item, which means it's going to be there in perpetuity.
Yes.
So if we would rather have it under the maintenance department, which would then be, you know, normal, we could take that out and put it there, otherwise-
I don't care where it is, to be quite honest. I'd like roads being front and center, so I want it as an item showing up, so we always talk about roads. But then in the departmental reports, I'd like maintenance to, to start doing a departmental report, so we know what the maintenance department is doing each month. That's, they're kind of two different things. So, um, do we need to vote on that, or will you-
That's, that's up to council, whatever y'all want to do.
Okay, so would you guys like to see the maintenance department have a monthly report in our packet, just like the other departments?
Yes.
So can I make a motion, or?
You want to do it?
Okay, yes, I'll make a motion that the council has requested that the maintenance department have a monthly departmental report that covers roads and whatever else they're working on, uh, in our monthly packet. Somebody want to second it?
Second.
Okay. Can we, do we vote on it?
Yeah, we're going to vote on it.
I think that we would like to, to kind of have that at a higher, high level.
Just like the other departmental reports.
Yeah, but, you know, not 47 pages.
It'll, it'll be 50.
Oh, okay. All right. As long as it's a limit to it.
Are we voting?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Matt, do you have anything you want to report, other than, uh, your grant you think you'd like?
Just a couple of things. Um, so our next coffee with the cop is scheduled for July 12th, um, 7:00 AM to 8:30 AM. So that's a Wednesday, July 12th. Uh, it will be at the Public Safety Center. Again, 7:00 to 8:30 AM. We'll have, you know, a big sign, big banner, so that way, you all won't miss us. So come join us. Uh, and then moving on to a couple of pages in, so there's a few things I want to, a few officers I want to recognize. First is Officer Kyle Newsom. Officer Newsom has been with the city and as a peace officer, uh, for seven years. Um, so his peace officer time, eh, has been with our city, uh, completely. So he has reached seven years as of this month. Uh, and then I want to congratulate Officer, or Corporal Raul Videro. Uh, he has been with the city for 14 years this month.
Wow.
And outside of that, that's all I got.
Thanks, sir. Jesse, do you like to say something?
Like Dr. Stair, will we take the power off last, uh, starting this new day?
Thanks, sir. Anybody else that's here, Dalton? Yeah, any, okay, moving right along. We're getting close.
Oh, can, uh, the communication report that's in here, um, does that make sense to, to include it in the workshop that we're going to have on the social media policy and everything? We can go over the-
We, yeah, we, I mean, whatever y'all want to do in the workshops, we can, and we can kind of go from there, so.
Okay, well, I'd like us to cover the reports, because, um, it says in there that, um, there's a communications department roles and responsibilities, the communications department mission, vision, and value statement, the copy of the department's strategy and goals, and stuff like that, I would love to see, and I'd love council to be involved in. So if we can cover that in the same workshop, maybe.
Do we have a tentative date for that workshop reveal?
Um, there's a workshop for, I don't even know what day of the year it is, uh, next week, the 22nd. Um, and that'll go over kind of strategic planning, you know, obviously four hours will go pretty quick.
Yep.
So we could always set future workshop dates. I mean, we could do a standing workshop every week. I'm, I'm good with it. So-
I think it, the only problem is summer's a very busy time for all of this.
Absolutely.
So, you know, sometimes we, we might not be at a workshop simply because of-
Yeah, and, and what we'll do is we'll always, we'll always send out, you know, dates and times that try to work best for everybody. Sometimes it is a process where we'll go back and forth and figure it out, and we may need to push it back, so, yeah.
Okay.
It's not a lack of interest, it's a lack of time.
Oh, I'm, yeah, no.
Oh, and in your report, um, NPR 411 sounds awesome. I cannot wait for it, that we can give our citizens something to get information and make it two-way, and so, I love it.
Okay, moving along, uh-
Oh, I have one more thing, if we're getting off departmental reports. On the finance report, um, I just want to, Kerry and I have been talking, and he wants to do this, and I just want to work with him. But, you know, we get 50 pages of a financial report in there, and we're going to get it down to five or six pages. So what I'd like the council to do is to authorize me, um, and if anyone else wants to join in, and Kerry already has a really good start, to, um, help come up with financial information to provide to city council that we think you need to know each month, instead of you just, you just getting the data, and then you have to go hunt and peck as to what you're looking at. Um, so can I get authorization from the council to work with Kerry and anyone else that wants to work with us on this? Because, no more than one, more, right. So maybe two, it can be one councilperson or two to work with Kerry on just providing you guys some information that makes sense, so that we, and we're stopping the 50 pages, and-
I'll also put it on-
On, it'll be online, it will no longer be in the packet. So if you have a question, you can go online and look at the detail, but you're not going to get it in your packet every month. Does that make sense? Do I need to make a motion that we're going to revamp the financial section of the financial packet, and I'm authorized to work with Kerry?
Go forth and do great.
Well, I'm sensitive with me going to Dalton, as he's already told me, I can't go to him as a single councilperson, that I have to go to him from the, honey, that's what you told me. So I'm really sensitive.
Okay, we, make a motion that you do that.
Second.
Do we need to vote on it?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Any city council comments, uh, getting ready to close, is there any, any comments you'd like to make our citizens? We're going to, we're going to, uh, go into executive session here in a few moments, so we're going to have to vacate the building. Uh, we will reconvene at some point in time, if you'd like to wait, but there will, there's nothing to be voted on, so there will only be nothing to-
Can I just make a quick comment real quick? I want to thank everyone from, for coming. This is awesome, and especially those that got up and made comments, because I've been up there, and I know how hard it is. Also, hang in there with us. We're all new, we're stutter stepping, we have the, the best benefit of the city in mind, so please hang in, in there with us. And we're always accessible. So, um, thank you. Um, Dalton's, Dalton is going to, um, provide us like some framework for it, and then we'll be picking members. Thanks, Scott. Yeah, you got that, Alphelia?
Scott, because I could not hear you.
For the Parks and Rec Committee.
I am, I'm getting, I didn't mean for anybody to leave just now. I would just let them know that we were going to executive session, so I will make that announcement.
We can do the agenda for next time.
The, the city council will convene at the executive session relating to Texas Local Government Code 551.074, personnel matters as it relates to the city manager. That's by law.
Okay, can I go potty real quick?
In five minutes, we got to go potty.
Yeah, you got, you got time.
So, so, um, we didn't put on what we want on the agenda for next time. I just would like to have HB 1434.
Okay, okay. Okay, all right.
Or you could just-
I just want HB 1434.
Okay, okay, okay.
Because that, so that, so to the point of like how quickly things get stacked up, that's pretty much exactly it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, so no, you, if you just say, hey, you know, I'd like to- Did you not ask questions on it?
Okay.
Right. Hey, and thanks for letting Kevin come, and I, you know, I, again, I'm just kind of, I have these road concerns, you just keep telling me the best way to go, and we can always-
And, and as long as we know what we're due, and we can-